You all stand for the invocation?
invocation, Lord God, our heavenly Father, we ask you to oversee our meeting today and bless each one's effort to help craft new policies to enable us to confront the health problems our nation is facing today. Let us enhance our work, forge more unities, and widen our perspectives in the service to the people and to you, our Lord. Watch over us today and grant us the knowledge, patience, and prudence that shall enable us to continue living, working, and serving well towards not just a new normal, but the much better normal for the healthcare system in our country. We shall persevere. We shall continue to combine work with prayers to you, Lord God. Amen.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion to dispense with the calling of the role?
Mister Chair?
Yes.
I respectfully move that we dispense with the calling of the role.
There's a duly seconded motion to dispense with the calling of the role. Uh, hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Uh, any other motion on?
Mister Chair, I likewise respectfully move that we dispense with the reading of the uh, minutes of the previous committee hearing.
And, and the approval of the same?
As well as the approval of the same, Mister Chair.
There's a duly seconded motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting and the approval of the same. Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. At this point, we'd like to uh, acknowledge the members of the uh, committee who are physically present. Um, honorable and chairman of the Committee on Transportation, Honorable Romeo Ako. Uh, honorable, uh, Richard Gomez. Uh, honorable, Joseph Lara. And honorable Jervil Louistro. And uh, those on Zoom. We have Honorable Jane T. Castro. Honorable Rodolfo Ordanes. Honorable Maria Lucille Nava. Uh, Vice Chair, uh, Vice Chair, Peter Miguel. Uh, Vice Chair Evgeny Vincente Imano. Honorable Muhammad Paglas. Honorable Christopher DiVinesia. Uh, Honorable and Vice Chair Janet Green. Honorable Ron Salo. Um, Honorable Carmelo Lazatine and Vice Chair. Uh, Honorable Journey Jet Nissai. Honorable Iulogio Rodriguez. Honorable Charis Ann Hernandez. Honorable Jaisal Victoria Yu. Uh, Honorable Larni Roque. Uh, Honorable Augustina Dominic Pancho. Honorable Bonifacio Bosita. Honorable Vice Chair Daphne Lagun. Honorable Vice Chair Maria Rachel Arenas. Honorable Maria Hamina Catherine Agarau. Honorable Dante Garcia. Honorable Eleanor Bulot Begtang. And uh, Honorable uh, Mary Mitzi Kahayonui. And the Honorable Ricardo Cruz Junior. Thank you very much uh, for your presence. Uh, Comsec. Um, kindly uh, introduce and acknowledge our esteemed resource persons.
Thank you Chair. Honorable Members of the Committee, good morning. In attendance for today's meeting are the following. From the Department of Health, from the Health Facility Development Plan Director, Dr. Melissa Sena. And Director Rodley Desmond Carza. From the uh, Food and Administration, Drug, Drug, Drug Administration. Attorney Joseph James Jimenez. From the uh, Department of Trade and Industry. Uh, Mister Ilano. From the National Nutrition Council, Director Rita Pape. From the Philippine Culinary Heritage Movement and Slow Food Youth Network Philippines. Mister Jam Melchor. From um, a resource person, a food historian, your honor. Mister Iger Ramos. From the Department of Budget and Management. Attorney Melanie Kilantang and Ms. Jimmy Lee Buque. Um, also from the same department, Mister Ryan Milanes. And Mister Brian Arrevalo. With the DBM also our director, our, our Ms. Doris Patenyo and Ms. Mary Methiljoy Gabiazon. From the Department of Labor and Employment. Doctor Darrell Lucian Bautista. And from the Region One Medical Center, Doctor Joseph Holland Mejia. That is all, your honor.
Thank you, uh, Comsec. Um, before we proceed, uh, please allow, allow me to uh, give a brief remarks. Distinguished colleagues, esteemed guests, good morning. Today's agenda is all about food and nutrition. As the saying goes, we are the food we eat. It is very important therefore that people are aware first and foremost of the nutrients contained in our daily diet. Whether they are safe and healthy and not just delicious. As such, the committee shall tackle bills on national significance on the matter of salt iodization and the disclosure of nutritional information in the menus of food establishments. Whereafter, the committee shall also consider some local bills establishing and upgrading health facilities. The aforementioned bills are of vital importance to health promotion. It is incumbent upon this honorable committee to deliberate upon the proposed legislations. And upon hearing the comments and recommendations of the concerned agencies and stakeholders with the envy of enacting meaningful legislations. Without further ado, let us now proceed with uh, our agenda this morning. First, uh, we will uh, deliberate on bills amending uh, or repealing Republic Act Number Eight One Seven Two entitled An Act for Self-Iodization Nationwide. The first in the agenda are bills to seeking to amend otherwise repeal Republic Act Number Eight One Seven Two. And I would like to recognize the uh, first authors. Uh, House Bill Number One Two Eight Two. Uh, seeking to repeal the uh, Republic Act Number Eight One Seven Two by Honorable Christopher DiVinesia. Uh, Honorable DiVinesia, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and good morning to all of our esteemed colleagues. Um, it is my distinct pleasure to sponsor House Bill One Two Eight Two or an act repealing Republic Act Number Eight One Seven Two entitled An Act Promoting Salt Iodization Nationwide and for related purposes. The ASEAN law, as it is uh, uh, known to the public, was enacted to eliminate micronutrient malnutrition, particularly deficiency disorders through the cost-effective preventive measure of salt iodization. Although a good law, it has imposed uh, restrictions that brought about challenges to our salt industry. Local producers are unable to compete with the global and domestic market because of uh, all the regulations on production. The variety of salt used depends on the dish being made. So Tinapa Manufacturers of Cavite and Dagupan pointed out that the use of iodized salt has caused Tinapang Bangus to taste differently. The ASEAN law overlooks the fact that there are a variety of salts in the country and its production is a vital component of culinary tradition, culture, and diversity. Mister Iger Ramos, an award-winning food historian, writer, and communicator, who by the way is here with us today, so I'm curious to hear uh, his position uh, on the, on the matter, wrote about how salt beds and storehouses are fast disappearing. The ASEAN Tibuok, which was affected by this law, is currently a living and dying tradition. Our salt industry is therefore in need of saving. This bill seeks to address the challenges for small local farmers to competitively compete in the domestic and more so the global market. It also seeks to revive the practice of salt makers to make salt that are unique to their location and to restore local salt industries as well as other local businesses that were negatively affected by the passing of the ASEAN law. Mister Chair, in view of the foregoing, the passage of House Bill One Two Eight Two is earnestly sought. Thank you and good morning.
Thank you, Honorable uh, DiVinesia. Uh, before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge uh, uh, Honorable Will Bertley, who is uh, physically present. And on Zoom, uh, Honorable uh, Anna York Bondo. Uh, Honorable Mide Kua. Honorable Caroline Tanchai and uh, Honorable Vice Chair Maria Angelal, Angel Angela Garcia. Um. Maybe now.
Mister Chair. Um, Mister Chair, Steve Solon, I'd just like to manifest my presence, Mister Chairman.
Honorable Steve Solon is hereby acknowledged. Thank you uh, for your present, uh, attendance. Uh, maybe now here, uh, the comment from. So, we will now call on uh, sorry about uh, the resource person, we'll, we'll tackle the second bill. Uh, House Bill Numbers Six One Two Three. Uh, An Act Amending Republic Act Number uh, An Act Promoting Salt Iodization Nationwide for related purposes, partially requiring producers and manufacturers of food-grade salt to comply with the Iodization Program. Uh, by Honorable Richard Gomez. Uh, Honorable Gomez, you're now recognized.
Thank you. Good morning, um, Mister Chairman. To my colleagues, good morning, each and everyone. Republic Act Eight One Seven Two or An Act Promoting Salt Iodization Nationwide or the ASEAN Law was enacted in nineteen ninety-five to help combat a global health problem, that of iodine deficiency diseases. While the more well-known IDDs are greater in hypothyroidism, deficiency in iodine is most debilitating, debilitating for school-aged children as well as pregnant and lactating mothers. It results in mental retardation and stunted growth. In fact, a meta-analysis of eighty-seven studies worldwide showed that iodized salt increases IQ by an average of eight point eighteen points. While we understand that iodizing salt is perhaps the most cost-effective way to include iodine in the food intake of Filipinos, it is only prudent to take stock of the effects of the ASEAN law on its primary goal, which is to reduce the incidence of IDD in the Philippines. This analysis reveals that the following issues. Number one, while universal iodization was mandated in nineteen ninety-five, test results reveal that in actuality, a better part of iodized salt consumed in the Philippines fall short of Befad required standards, bringing down the effective proportion of households using adequately iodized salt. Data from the UNICEF shows that the percentage of households consuming iodized salt more than doubled from twenty-three percent in nineteen ninety-nine to fifty-three percent in twenty thirteen and fifty-seven percent in twenty eighteen. This significant jump is directly attributed to the enactment of the ASEAN law. However, this statistic does not reflect the whole picture because in another study published by the Journal of Endocrinology and Metabolism, most iodized salt consumed in the Philippines does not qualify as adequately iodized salt. When the data was adjusted, the percentage of households consuming adequately iodized salt is only twenty-five point three percent in two thousand and three and twenty-five point seven percent in twenty thirteen, based on data from the National Nutrition Survey of the Philippines. Number two, the median iodine levels improved only for school-aged children. Despite the implementation of the ASEAN law, the same NNS study showed the similar trend results of urine iodine levels for different demographic groups. The median iodine levels of school-aged children have improved from some, from seventy-one uh, microgram per liter in nineteen ninety-eight to one hundred sixty-eight microgram per liter in twenty thirteen, which is within the desired range, and that is good news. However, a declining trend in median iodine levels occurred for the following groups. Elderly age sixty and above, one hundred and seven to eighty microgram per liter. Lactating mothers, one hundred and eleven in two thousand and three. Based on eighty on, on the two thousand and eight data, it's eighty-one microgram per liter and seventy-seven microgram per liter in twenty thirteen. And pregnant women, the data shows that hundred forty-two in two thousand and three, one hundred and five in two thousand and eight, and one hundred and five microgram per liter in two thousand and thirteen. These same groups experience increases in proportions of below fifty microgram per liter level, which is categorized as moderate iodine deficiency according to the World Health Organization. And number three, we have to consider the dangers of above-normal iodine levels as they usher indifferent set of diseases. The same study has found that there are larger proportions of the demographic groups that are now in the above-normal range of urinary iodine levels. One of the effects of universal salt iodization is the whole population is exposed to iodine, even though the reality is that iodine treatment or enrichment requires a requirement depends on each person's needs. Whereas the median iodine levels have increased for school-aged children, we have to recognize the larger percentage of school-aged children, which is forty-two percent, are in the above-normal iodine level range. So in comparison, twenty-six point six percent are in the desired iodine level range. And in a recent article in the Manila Bulletin dated July two thousand and two, twenty thou, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, during the pandemic uh, era, Doctor Nikodemus of the Philippine Tyrode Association asserts that among the reasons for iodine deficiency is low dietary intake of milk, eggs, and seafood, which are considered to be the best natural source of iodine. While all of the above findings warrant a reexamination of the ASEAN law, let us not forget that in the process of implementing universal salt iodization, we have practically decimated the local salt industry. Namatay dahsa ASEAN law. So most especially the subsistence of small salt producers. For a country like the Philippines that has seven thousand six hundred plus islands with over thirty-six thousand kilometers of coastline, salt making is deeply rooted into our culture. And many cultural communities have their own unique ways of making salt, depending on the environment and materials at hand. Sadly, Mister Chair, many salt-making practices have been abandoned and forgotten because of the ASEAN law. Had made it economically unviable. Only a handful of these artisanal salts have survived, such as the ASEAN Tibuok of Bohol, the Tul Tul of Gimaras, and the Bud Bud of Iloilo. With the effectiveness of the ASEAN law in question, it is high time to relax the mandate of the ASEAN law to restore the legal environment to one that is conducive to cultivating and developing our rich culture in salt-making traditions. Needless to say, most of the small-scale salt producers are also the ones belonging to the most economically disadvantaged groups in society. In view of the foregoing, Mister Chair, uh, this bill proposes to relax the universal iodization of salt for subsistence and small producers and manufacturers of salt in the Philippines. However, medium and large producers and manufacturers will continue to be required to follow the iodization standards set by the Befad. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Honorable uh, Gomez. We now uh, hear the uh, comment from the Department of Health, Director Rodley, Rodley Carza.
Good.
Rodley Car, uh, the good day, your honor.
Your honors. Um, the Department of Health recognizes the challenges uh, being experienced by local salt producers, especially during the ongoing development and revitalization of the salt industry. However, the DOH also acknowledges the strong need to retain the mandatory iodization of all food-grade salt, including the mandatory requirement of providing only iodized salt in food outlets, restaurants, and stores as provided in the law. Universal salt iodization remains to be the most cost-effective and efficient measure in addressing iodine deficiency disorders. And the ASEAN law, despite its share of implementation challenges, has achieved its goal in increasing um, the iodine intake of Filipino age groups, saving countless lives that would have been at risk to the dangers of IDDs. The DOH instead proposes that the work on revitalizing the Philippine salt industry should be used as an opportunity to address the gaps and challenges in the implementation of the ASEAN law in order to sustain the improved health outcomes that are the fruits of decades-long implementation of the lost provisions. The department enjoins partners in government as well as the private sector to provide an equal weight uh, in the promotion and protection of the health outcomes of our people and the development of strategies that will pursue economic development and to, to, and to come together to develop strategies that will result in the attainment of both better health outcomes and economic outcomes. Um, the DOH cautions um, the repealing of um, Sections Three B, Five A, and Five C of the law and strongly recommends to retain the original provisions of the ASEAN law. Uh, the mandatory requirement for producers and manufacturers um, uh, to make available to customers only iodized salt are pivotal to the law's success and that allowed for countless life to be saved from the disorders related to iodine deficiency. And attenuating these uh, provisions will have drastic effect um, in the compliance of salt producers, uh, manufacturers, and retailers in the implementation of um, the law and achievement of the outcomes. Um, Mister Chair, will, the department will also submit uh, further recommendations, specific recommendations to the committee uh, for consideration, Mister Chair.
Uh, in, in short, uh, you do not support the amend, amending amendment of uh, RA Eight One Seven Two?
Uh, yes, Mister Chair, uh, we um, do not support the appeal of the, uh, the repeal of the uh, ASEAN law, but will uh, probably support uh, provisions or um, amendments that will strengthen the implementation of the ASEAN law. So if there are other strategies aside from um, removing the iodization requirement, uh, the department is open for, to um, uh, supporting those particular.
So you are for, you're so, for amendment but not repeal?
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Mister Chair. Thank you so much. Uh, after hearing our uh, resource person from the Health Promotion Bureau, Mister Chair, and after hearing uh, Congressman uh, DiVinesia, who would like to repeal the, the ASEAN law. Uh, on my part, Mister Chair, I think it is very important for us to understand the the economics of uh, of this long uh, of this uh, lifelong tradition of uh, salt making in the country. We must remember that the Philippines is a coastal country. Therefore, we have abundance of uh, the possibility of producing salt, except that uh, uh, requiring even the small manufacturers of salt to, to have iodine in their products is really very detrimental to their, to their uh, produce. So the amendment, Mister Chair, is really, I think, uh, very important at this point in time for, for the small producers to, to survive and to economically uh, uh, to actually um, give way to most uh, salt producers and artisanal salt producers. Because for artisanal, uh, for, for, for the different uh, types of salt, we are also giving our society, our people, tayomismo, we're giving ourselves a, a chance to choose the kind of salt that we need. Sometimes there are, there are salts that uh, need to be fed to, to uh, those that lack iodine in their, in their nutrition, but a, a lot of people don't need iodine in their, in their, in their uh, nutrition. Thank you so much, Mister Chair.
Thank you, uh, Honorable Gomez. We will, we will let the resource speaker uh, uh, present their position and then we will, the members of the committee will then uh, uh, ask questions. So next, uh, uh, Doctor Rita Pape of the National, uh, the National Nutrition Council, uh, is now recognized.
Thank you, Mister Care. Uh, your, your honors, uh, I think one of the main reasons why we want to repeal the law is because of the death of the, the salt industry. I think that's the main reason given, but uh, repealing or killing the law, I think will be very detrimental and disastrous also to the health and nutrition of uh, the Filipinos. Because uh, it will have uh, it will give a lot of uh, negative effects on the efforts for iodine deficiency, combating the iodine deficiency disorder. And as they said, this was, there was an experience in Vietnam where they had relaxed their uh, iodiz, iodization program. And there I, and the iodine deficiency disorders also uh, uh, increased. So we don't like to have that Vietnam experience. And I think uh, if addressing the, addressing the uh, deterioration or the death of the salt industry is what we are looking for, I think we have to look for the causes of the death of the industry. And based on our sources, there is nothing in our list that tells us that the salt iodization law was the one that contributes to, contributed to the deterioration of the salt industry. May I read to you uh, one of the reports I read from the uh, Philippine Salt Industry Roadmap written by the Philippine Chamber of Salt Manufacturers? It says, and I quote, "The industry is heading towards a downward trend. Lack of suitable investment climate, regulatory support, government programs, and infusion of new technologies has prevented the industry from fulfilling its true, true development potent, potential. The Fil, the Philippines is at risk of losing its remaining salt industry located in Pangasinan, Mindoro, and Bulacan along with its manpower and available resources." Also noted, actually is uh, by one of, one of the experts, uh, they say that urbanization has actually was the cause of deterioration. When, when, for instance, the Laspenias area, we got urbanized, it has to stop its uh, salt farms. Pollution also, like in Bulacan, uh, one of the major costs of the loss of the industries is the pollution that is due to modernization. One of the major costs also that was pointed out was the control of the market by the importers, where local salt suppliers, salt producers actually have to sell their uh, produce to uh, big uh, manufacturers who controls the market. Uh, and uh, there's one model that was able to uh, to handle this one, the Tamako, Tamako, which is the Tamaraumindoro Association Cooperatives of Salt Producers, who were able to cooper, cooperativize, who got into a cooperative and went directly to the market, and they're doing well. I think yeah, if that is one model that we can push through, uh, we should be able to uh, uh, help. Other causes also is uh, the tedious process in the tedious process in the getting of licenses. Also, lack of equipment, lack of support from, for the small farmers. So there were a host of factors, and none of these were uh, talks about salt iodization. And uh, these data, some of these were results of the uh, interviews and focus group discussions we conducted in twenty twenty-one with some, including salt producers. So I guess uh, uh, handling, looking at really the real cause of the salt, uh, the death of the salt industry, uh, should, and addressing this should be the main uh, focus and not repealing the law because of its adverse effects on uh, the salt, on the I, IDD program. On the, on the proposal to, to amend, I think also that because we, we, we really want to have the universal salt iodization, uh, that is the goal of the nutrition, of the uh, National Salt Iodization Program is to attain uh, universal salt iodization or majority of the households consuming iodized salt. And if we give in to partial, uh, it can also uh, deteriorate more. So that we think that uh, as long as we focus on the causes and as long as the different industry se, sector, the, the uh, those. the those stakeholders involved, the small farmers, the DA, the Bfar, talk together, they should be able to come up with solutions on how to help these small farmers come up into cooperatives and survive within the context of the ASEAN law. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Pape. May we listen to Attorney Joseph Jimenez from the FDA?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Insofar as the FDA is concerned, our main position would be any food-grade salt that would be produced should be iodized. So to elaborate on this, I would like to present our position on this matter. So initially, while we see that it is the intention of the House bill to revitalize the salt industry, the state should likewise consider its responsibility in the reduction of iodine deficiency disorder, or IDD, through the Salt Iodization Program, which is already provided under RA 8172. Now, we see in the explanatory note that it's already mentioned that salt is a basic commodity and an essential ingredient for home cooking, food processing, and the like. So with this, we think that it justifies the importance of salt iodization as among the common ingredients that can be found and used at home and food establishments which can help alleviate iodine deficiency. In addition, the House bill should also not only consider the trade aspect, but more so the impact on the nutritional status of IDD individuals, which in effect has an impact on the focus or the mental ability and overall productivity of a person. So we see that the nutritional intake of a person plays a vital role in the upbringing and in the education of individuals. So from the perspective of the FDA, we see it more to be concerned with addressing the iodine deficiency of the population. In addition, the best basis for not iodizing the salt would be actual scientific data provided, if possible, by the DOST-FNRI, showing that there is already a significant reduction of IDD in the country and is no longer considered a health problem. Furthermore, the FDA's mandate is to specific only to ensuring food safety for processed and prepared food stuff. In addition, the proposed legislation appears to focus only on alleviating the status of local salt farmers and exporters. So to sum, Mr. Chairman, from the viewpoint of the FDA, we are more focused on the quality, safety, and efficacy of salt in general. And in addition, if we think that removing some of the limits on the iodization or removing the iodization requirement altogether, we think that another, on the other flip side of the coin, we can just focus instead on being able to help the local farmers by teaching them or helping them through either financial or technical means. So I think, Mr. Chair, we recommend that we can also look at this matter. That would be all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Attorney Jimenez. Before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of the members on Zoom. Honorable Maria Victoria Copilar, Honorable Vice Chair Christine Alexei Chutor, Honorable Luz Mercado, Honorable Jocelyn Tulfo, Honorable Ramon Guico Jr., Honorable James Ang Jr., Honorable Floridary Darobes, Honorable Fernando T. Cabredo, Honorable Adrian J. Advincula, and Honorable Ernesto Junicio Jr. Last, from our resource person from the DTI, Mr. Gino Ilano. Mr. Ilano? Mr. Ilano, you are now recognized.
Good morning, your honor.
Please proceed.
Sir, in behalf of DTI, I think the Regional Director of Region 1 is present. They are officially the representative of DTI for the ASEAN law.
Regional Director from Region 1, DTI?
Good morning, everyone.
Please identify yourself.
Yes, sir, I am Regional Director Grace Baluian of DTI Region 1. I am representing the Regional Operations Group and have been designated by the Regional Operations Group as the representative of DTI ROG in the salt industry endeavors.
Please proceed.
So one of the agreements in the previous public hearing is the presentation of the interventions provided by our Regional Operations. And if I may be allowed to share screen to present our interventions?
Please proceed.
So allow me to present the interventions of the different regions to the salt makers. This was provided to me by the different regional directors. So for Region 1, we have assisted 70 MSMEs for the period 2018 to 2022. The interventions provided are trainings, skills, entrepreneurial learning visits, KME or the Cooperative Mentoring Program, food safety, and the conduct of value chain workshops. We have also provided product development, the improvement of packaging, access to markets, participation to trade fairs, market matching, provision of shared services facility for the salt in three iniloko sour, namely Santa Catalina, Cando, CT, and Kabugaw. And we have provided access to finance through SB Cares and the provision of NSV and PPG livelihood kits. For Region 2, they reported that they are in the process of collaborating with Bfar of Region 2 for the establishment of the following projects and for DTI to provide interventions to MSMEs once the projects are realized. So for this year, two units salt demo project for the region amounting to 1.2 million. For 2024, five projects in the following areas. Batanes, one unit, Kagayan, three units, Isabela, two units. The project, the proposed project amounting, projects amounted to 3.682 million. For Region 9, this is Sambuanga. They have provided equipment to Sambuanga Market Stole Operators Association under the SSF program, amounted to 293,000. For Sambuanga del Norte, assisted Rizal Group of salt makers in the preparation of business plan for UN foul funding, provided product label design to the Association of Salt Makers in Celino, the Pitang City. For DTI Sambuanga, Cebu province, assisted Jerusalem marble products manufacturing in product there, marketing and promotion, provision of training needed for FDA registration and KME. As an update, these are the other interventions provided. SSF with Salt Iodization Center for, I think this has been reported on the report. For NCR, Car, Karaga, Regions 5, and they reported, you know, identified.
Excuse me? Director Baluian, just highlight, make it brief?
Yes, sir, this is the last slide, sir. Region 12, identified two salt makers for profiling and provision of interventions. The two salt makers are Saldor Milling Corporation and Arbin International Marketing Incorporated. That's all, your honor. Thank you.
Thank you. So what's your position? Are you supporting the amendment or the repeal of?
The amendment. We are supporting the amendment of the ASEAN law, your honor.
Thank you, Director Baluian.
Thank you, sir.
We now recognize Honorable Luis Tro for.
Mr. Chair, listening to our resource speakers, I thought that we should have convened a Joint Committee of Food and Agriculture and the Committee on Health because it's like there is a scenario of iodization as health intervention versus salt productivity, which to us are both equally important. Apparently, ASEAN law placed too much burden to salt producers, specifically the cost of iodine and the process of the same. Nonetheless, if we do away with iodization, the health of human beings, particularly the iodine level, will be compromised. So apart from the suggestion of our resource speakers to create cooperative in the presentation of DTI about the interventions being provided already by the government, it is really my position that still the salt productivity suffers. I do not mean to say that we need to repeal the law. I do not mean to say as well that we need to amend the law. What I want to point out is kulang ang interventions ng government. These are two equally important concerns. The iodization, reason why we passed this ASEAN law, and the food productivity, reason why we are creating salt regulatory industry as well. Because there is a pending bill. And I think we should not be made to choose between the two. Instead, we should find ways to reconcile these two important concerns of the national government. I appreciate the report about forming cooperatives because that is our avenue to get in touch with the small farmers as well as the interventions given by the DTI. However, the fact that we continue to import 82% of our salt supply only shows that indeed the salt productivity is terribly affected. Kulang ang interventions, kulang ang assistance ng government. In my perspective, we need to strengthen the interventions being given by the government so we can keep both the iodization and the salt productivity as well. I humbly submit, of course, to the wisdom of the Committee on Health and, of course, although they are not present, to the Committee on Food and Agriculture. That is all, Mr. Chair. And that is with all due respect, of course, to our two esteemed authors. ASEAN, let us take answer, be it an amendment or a repeal.
Number four.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, Ron Salo?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair?
Manifestation.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Congressman Salo?
Mr. Chair, I'll give the floor first to Rep. De Venesia.
Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. Mr. Chair? We have invited.
Congressman De Venesia, Honorable De Venesia?
Yes, we've actually invited some other resource persons from the private sector this time to actually speak on the matter or maybe share with us their insights as to why, whether it's a repeal or an amendment, it's necessary. And it's not just really to revive the salt industry, but it's also the preservation of our culinary and gastronomical heritage. And this was an express request of the gastronomy sector when we conducted hearings in the previous Congress, gastronomy being one of the identified sectors in the creative industries under traditional cultural expressions as a domain, of course, enshrined in the recently enacted Creative Industries Development Act. So this was a direct response to the requests of the stakeholders and some of them are actually here with us, champions who have been advocating for culinary heritage. So perhaps, Mr. Chair, maybe we can, before we invite the other members to chime in with their thoughts or be allowed to ask questions to the resource persons, maybe we can invite them to speak if it's okay with you.
Thank you, Honorable De Venesia. We will now give the floor to two more resource person. We now recognize Mr. Jam Melchor from the Philippine Culinary Heritage Movement. Mr. Melchor?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. May I backay you on to our distinguished representatives from the Congress? The Philippine Culinary Heritage Movement and the Slow Food Youth Network supports the amendment of the 20-year-old ASEAN law to exempt Philippine sea salt from mandatory iodization. Such exemption will allow the redevelopment of Philippine sea salt industry, which sea salt is among the best of gourmet salt and the most expensive in the world. The artisanal method of Philippine sea salt production is akin to the production method of Lord de Sal in southern France and Lord de Sal in the coasts of Portugal. With the Philippine sea salt farms flourishing, tens of thousands more will be employed. Since 2017, kami po ay nananawagan na magroon ng amendment to the 20-year-old ASEAN law. And dumarating rin po ang panahon because of climate change na nangangailangan ng suporta 'yung ating mga small-scale salt farmers katulad na nangyari last year sa isang nag-iisang salt farmer ng ASEAN tebuok na nasira po 'yung kanilang pagawaan. And we had to chip in para lang po may maibigay kami na suporta at mabuo nila muli 'yung kanilang production facility. In addition, we support the amendment of the ASEAN law where in iodine deficiency of children is directly addressed through iodine supplements provided by local health authorities in view of the present regulation prescribing the iodization of salt produced in the Philippines for human and animal use. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You will listen now to Mr. Ige Ramos and then Honorable Salo will have the floor. Mr. Ramos? Mr. Ige Ramos?
Good morning. Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to share a screen. Atulam po ay position ng isang food writer at food anthropologist dahil tinitingnan ko dito 'yung mga panukala tungkol dun sa ating salt, no? So let me share my screen. Ito'y ikse po lamang. So noong nagfood mapping ako noong 2014, sa Kawit, ito po ay funded by Tiasa, no? Nadiskover ko na marami, na namamatay na ang industri ng ASEAN. So dun sa aking libro, 'Yung Republic of Taste and Tall Stories of Cavite Cuisine, nadocumento dito 'yung mga ibat-ibang foodways noong ating kanayuna, no? Isa na dito 'yung huling irasan ng Santa Isabel sa Kawit-Cavite, no? Ang pinupunta ko po dito ay noong 2016, no? Ngayon po ay wala na to. Pinupunta ko po dito, talagang meron pong kaugnayan ang iodization law sa pagpanaw. sa pag, pag, pagpanaw ng ating mga salt beds, no? Tung irasan. Ito pong irasan na'to ay mga two hundred or three hundred years old na they existed during the Galleon Trade. Ito po 'yung sa Kawit, no? Ang punto ko po dito ay walang masyadong nagkaroon ng cultural impact study, no? Sa pag, uh, pag-aano ng, um, nung, nung ASIN, no? Uh, nakikita niyo po ba 'yung slides?
Yes.
Okay. Sige po. So, um, ito po 'yung, uh, huling documentation ko nung March twenty sixteen sa Kawit at, uh, meron malaki ang kaugnayan po ng ASIN uh, dito sa paggawa ng tinapa dun sa bayan ng Rosario na siguro ngayon po, uh, ito'y po 'yung mga sikat na sikat na tawag nila ay ang salinas, no? 'Yung tinapang salinas na ginagawa sa Rosario Cavite. Merong malalim na kaugnayan ang paggawa ng ASIN sa paggawa ng tinapa sa Rosario Cavite, no? At sa Kawit, no? Isang, halos isang taon lang 'yung difference niya. So ngayon, uh, mula nung twenty sixteen, siguro may mga since na, na, naipasa ambatas nung, nung nineteen ninety-five. Ang, the, ang, 'yung problema ay narandaman lamang after ten years, no? Naunti-unting nagde-decline, nagkakaroon na ng rural mass migration, uh, nawawala na 'yung mga dating gumagawa ng, ng ASIN na, na sa palagay ko ay isang mahalagang industriya kasi, uh, galing pa ito sa ano, no? Uh, bahagi na ito ng ating kultura. Yun nga, no? 'Yung, 'yung cultural impact study. Tapos, um, ang ASIN ay hindi lamang ginagamit sa tinapa kundi sa ibat-ibang kaluto ng ating, uh, you know, ng ating, uh, kultura tulad ng ibat-ibang sausawan. Ito ay isang primary ingredient din sa paggawa ng buro, ng bagoong, ng mga fermented foods, no? So ngayon, ang, ang pinupunta riyan natin ay 'yung mga health issues, no? Siguro, uh, ang problema ay hindi lamang 'yung iodine deficient, deficiency, but 'yung general malnutrition, no? And then at the same time, uh, kung hindi natin aalagaan ang cultural health ng ating bansa, paano pa natin maaalagaan 'yung physical health natin? No? Siguro, magkaroon tayo ng balanseng pananaw, uh, whether to appeal or repeal or amend uh, dahil at the end of the day, ang, ang ASIN ay talagang mahalaga sa ating pang-araw-araw na, na, na buhay, no? Kung makikita niyo dito 'yung mga ibat-ibang tao dun sa mga pampang, ito po 'yung aking mga ethnographic research over the years, um, na, 'yung gitna po ay gumagawa ng kasilyo, no? Ito po 'yung isang malapit na ring mamatay na industriya, 'yung ating cheese making na ang pangunahing ingredient din ay ASIN, no? So, uh, pagnamatay ito, uh, parang, para ano pa 'yung ating mga health issues, no? So, so, uh, hindi po ako policymaker, pero ang sagana ng akin ay sanat tulungan natin at magkaroon talaga ng mas, masusi at mas la, malalim na interbensyon upang mapat, mapat, mapanatili ang ating, um, um, ang kalusugan ng ating kultura at hindi lamang ng ating katawan. Yun lamang po at maraming salamat.
Thank you very much, uh, good historian, uh, Mister Iger Ramos. Uh, uh, Honorable Ron Salo, uh, you have the floor.
Maraming salamat po, Mister Chair. Nice ko lang pong banggitin po sa committee na ito, kagaya rin po ng binanggit po kanina ni Congresswoman Gerbill na may kasalukuyan pong, uh, dinidinig po sa Committee on Food and Agriculture na, uh, paanukalong batas din kung saan ang iyong lingkod. I am one of the primary authors of that which is the Salt Industrial Vitalization Act. And kasalukuyan pong dinidinig po 'yan wherein I am the, uh, Technical Working Group Chair. At 'yun din binabanggit ni Congresswoman Luistro na mahalaga siguro kung maimbita rin natin 'yung mga ibang mga nandito for them to be able to attend as well and provide inputs in that particular proposal. Uh, first off, Mister Chair, nice po nating banggitin na I was actually part of the study on the review of the mandatory salt iodization law sometime two thousand fifteen, fourteen to two thousand fifteen, prior to my joining Congress. And malino po don, Mister Chair, na 'yung interventions din ng ASIN law, particularly in its implementation, ay naging effect, may malaking epekto po ito dun sa industriya po ng ASIN. I beg to disagree, 'yung binabanggit po nila kanina, Mister Chair, na wala pong relasyon 'yung mandatory salt iodization dun sa health nung industriya ng ASIN. Sapagkat naapektuhan po talaga dahil from one point, Mister Chair, while it's true that these are equally important, uh, public health measures, particularly itong, um, mandatory salt iodization, but the same time, mahalaga rin po 'yung industriya ng ASIN. Kaya lang, naging one-sided po, Mister Chair, 'yung implementation po nito. Kaya, actually, since two thousand fifteen, I was also seventh and eighth Congresses. Ako rin po 'yung nag-aadvocate ng amendment ng, uh, SIN law to make sure that we will be able to accommodate also, quote-unquote, we will be able to balance the interests, uh, both from the health perspective as well as the trade and livelihood of our salt farmers. Kasi kasalukuyan, Mister Chair, talagang nawala po talaga, tutu po 'yung binabanggit po nina, uh, Congressman Toff na nawala talaga 'yung industriya po ng ASIN. At nasaan na po 'yung mga mag-ASIN po natin. So kailangan po nating ibalansiko ito. So, I suppose, hindi ko po sinasabi, not an advocate for repeal of the ASIN law, Mister Chair, but I am an advocate for an amendment to make sure na that this particular proposed measures will coexist. Kailangan po nating buhayin 'yung industriya ng ASIN. At the same time, kung ipupuso po 'yung mandatory, still mandatory salt iodization, pero kailangan magkaroon po ng tweaking. It cannot be, uh, implemented the way it is now, Mister Chair. Kasi 'yung binabanggit po kanina ni Mister Iger Ramos, hindi naman po pwede na hayaan na lang po natin na mamatay po 'yung mga cultural heritage po natin, particularly the, uh, relating to food. Dahil may mandatory salt iodization tayo. Kailangan po natin bigyan po ng puwang. Kailangan po natin bigyan ng espasyo 'yung bawat isa para hindi naman po pwede na while we're pursuing the health of our people, na babaliwala. But in fact, Mister Chair, while it's true, panghuli na po ito, na ito 'yung one of the most effective interventions, 'yung mandatory salt iodization to make sure that salt, uh, that iodine, uh, is readily available to everyone. Ang problema po dito, Mister Chair, tinransfer po natin completely 'yung burden sa private, uh, industry. 'Yung role po ng gobyerno, nangyari to make sure that our people are informed, properly informed, that they are given proper access and make, they necess, to be able to make the necessary and appropriate decision. Eh, nangyari, binigay po natin 'yung burden totally to the, uh, salt makers of the salt industry, which shouldn't have been actually, Mister Chair. Kaya ngayon, 'yung binabanggit, dapat nagkaroon po ng impact study at the time. Pero at this particular point in time, while we're not advocating for its complete repeal, Mister Chair, siguro kailangan talaga naayusin para magkaroon po ng coexistence. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable Salo. Uh, before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge, uh, uh, Honorable Yulogio Rodriguez, uh, who is physically present, and on Zoom, Honorable Romolo Kidpeña Junior, Honorable Vice Chair Ray Florence Reyes, Honorable Maria Vanessa Oventado, and Honorable Rachel Margaret Delmar. Um... Um, may we now, uh, call on Honorable Marisa Delmar? Honorable Marisa Delmar Magcino? You're now recognized.
Yes. Thank you. Good morning, Copek. Good morning, Paul. Uh, Mister Chair. Uh, I would like just to clear some issues because of how...
Honorable Magcino, we cannot hear you well.
...by Representative Christopher De Venesia proposes the full repeal of re-promoting salt iodization. Uh, okay, may I, uh, start? Okay. My, my, uh, my volume is good? Hello?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you. Uh, this is regarding the House Bill number twelve eighty-two by Rep. Christopher De Venesia proposes the full repeal of Republic Act number eighty-one seventy-two or the law promoting uh, salt iodization nationwide or the ASIN law. While House Bill number six one two three by Representative Richard Gomez proposes the application of the law only to medium and large salt producers exempting small and subsistence producers. Uh, if we now repeal the law or limit its application to certain manufacturers, would not these actions compromise or undermine our efforts to eliminate micronutrient malnutrition in the country, particularly iodine deficiency disorders, uh, Mister Chair?
To whom are you directing the question, uh, Honorable?
Whoever could answer it, Mister Chair.
Uh... Uh, from, from the National Nutrition Council, uh, Director Papi.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, and, uh, your, uh... Yeah, I would like to reiterate, I think that, uh, repealing or, uh, compromising the implementation of the ASIN law will really lead to the deterioration of, uh, of, of nutrition, of the nutritional status of Filipinos, specifically iodine, uh, increase of iodine deficiency disorder. So we really, uh, would like to support the, that the salt iodization, uh, law be implemented and stays as is while we address the, uh, growth of the industry sector separately. Thank you.
Honorable Delmar. Yes, Honorable Delmar.
Yes, because eighteen years of it, yeah, Mister Chair. Because after eighteen years of its supposed implementation, one of the issues that have come to the fore is the restrictions imposed by the law to the local industry to produce only iodized salt, making it difficult for them to compete with the global market of salt and food products. Local producers are unable to offer a wider array of salt types in the domestic market, thus affecting their incomes. But the law also mandates the Department of Trade and Industry to assist and support local salt producers in upgrading their production technologies to include iodization by helping them obtain soft loans and financial assistance for the procurement of salt iodization machines, packaging equipment and technology, and by ensuring the systematic distribution of the iodized salt in the market. For info, um, Mister Chair. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much, uh, Honorable Delmar.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Honorable Lee.
Uh, morning, I'm Mister Chair. Uh, together with, uh, Cong, uh, Gomez and Cong Salo, it's also my belief that, uh, this also my belief that there is a need to, uh, amend or urgently review the ASIN law, no? To put in place effective mechanism and enough funding that would provide enough sustainable livelihood to our mag-ASIN, no? Uh, the sad, the painful truth is that from fifteen percent importation during the nineties, eighty percent during, uh, the twenty eighteen, and now ninety-three percent of our salt consumptions are being imported, no? While we have thirty-six thousand kilometers of shoreline, uh, longer than, uh, uh, Vietnam, napaka-konti po nung ating produksyon, no? Bumagsak talaga. The sad truth is that, uh, while the ASIN law, the, the ASIN law, gusto nating, uh, gawing iodized salt lahat 'yung, uh, uh, mga ASIN na ginagamit, pinapayagan po nating magimport ng mga hindi iodized salt, magimport, papunta dito sa atin, and we're prohibiting local, uh, mag-ASIN na magbenta ng hindi iodized salt, no? So yun po 'yung napaka, 'yung pong ma, the sad truth of it is that while we allow the importation of non-iodized salt, we prohibit local mag-ASIN from selling, uh, uh, non-iodized salt, no? So I think, uh, I am also, Mister Chair, for the amendment and, uh, review of the ASIN law. Yun lang po, Mister Chair. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you, Honorable Lee. Uh, Chairman Akop.
Mister Chair. Marami pong salamat. Uh... Yun po bang stand ng DOH at saka si Director Papi, hard line? Now you do not want any repeal or any amendment categorically?
Uh, Director Papi?
Uh, yes, uh, Your Honor, uh... I think repeal is a hard line, uh, it's a no. Uh, I think that's the, I think when it comes to stand, uh, it should not be repeal. Amendment is a better thing to go, but we are also saying that aside from looking at the amendment, maybe looking at the how to improve the small subsistence, uh, improve the lot of subsistence, uh, salt farmers is a better way to go and help them as, instead of, uh, of changing the law, we take care of the real cause of why they are not really, uh, growing. Uh, because I have said, as I have said, uh, nothing in our sources indicate that salt iodization is the documented sources show that salt iodization is the major cause of the deterioration of the salt industry, but there are other causes. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Uh, Director Karza?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, the department is also firm in its position to maintain the mandatory iodization of salt. Uh, but we are open to, um, amendments that will further strengthen efforts, um, uh, in the implementing, improving the implementation of the ASIN law, um, such as the, uh, provision mentioned by the Honorable, um, Representative a while ago in providing, uh, assistance to local salt producers and manufacturer in addressing the issue on, uh, importation, uh, Mister Chair. But, uh, in terms of, um, the mandatory iodization, uh, the department is firm to retain the mandate under ASIN law. Thank you.
Mister Chair. Chairman Akop.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh... Both of you would say that, uh, iodine deficiency is detrimental to health. Could you please give me, uh, uh, certain situations that would arise because of iodine deficiency? I'm not a doctor, so I wouldn't know that.
Uh... Director Papi? Oh, yes, Director Papi first and then we'll, uh, go to Director Karza. Director Papi?
Okay, uh, yeah, uh, it has, uh, irreversible, uh, lack of iodine actually among pregnant women has irreversible effects on the fetus. Uh... It causes, uh, during, during pregnancy and infancy, it can cause, uh, it affects brain development. Uh... It also leads to, uh, thyroid problems. And it says that about ten to fifteen, uh, IQ points are actually lost due to, uh, iodine deficiency.
Could you please repeat that statistic?
Ten to fifteen IQ points. Ten to fifteen IQ points are also, uh...
What, could you explain to this, uh, ignorant, uh, lawmaker, what, what are the, what is the meaning of IC points or what?
They say that, uh, the intellect of a person is actually, uh, measured by IQ. And they said iodine has a lot to play in terms of intellect, intellectual development. So, uh, lack of, lack of iodine uh, for a pregnant woman could affect the, the infant and affects the brain development and could lead to, uh, IQ, uh, low, lower IQ by less than ten to fifteen points.
In other words, uh...
Therefore, result to poorer, poorer schooling, ano?
In other words, iodine deficiency can lead to mental retardation.
Yes, Paul.
Mister Chair? Uh, yes, please.
Mister Chair, can I do a follow-up question in the question of Cong Akop?
Uh... Honorable Akop, um... After Honorable Akop, then... After Honorable Akop, then Honorable Di Venesia.
Are you trying to tell this august body or the members of this committee that iodine deficiency would affect only pregnant women, our children? Because what you have stated is it affects pregnant women, infants, it lessens the intellectual development of individuals? Is that what you're trying to tell us and that not, not every Filipino has iodine deficiency?
Sorry, sir, I think my answer is incomplete actually. It affects the general population, all age groups need adequate iodine. And actually, we have shown, I think, some of the data presented in the notes of Honorable Richard Gomez tells us that pregnant and lactating mothers are still having, are the populations that still have inadequate iodine based on data. So, it affects the whole population. What I was just emphasizing perhaps was the, it's very critical, the most vulnerable group, age group affected are the pregnant women's and pregnant women and the would-be mothers who will be bearing children soon. Because whatever happens to the child will have irreversible effects. If we have people, population that gets not really their full mental development potential, we have less productive Filipinos in the future.
And the baby? The would-be mother, the mother and the baby?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, are there other sources of iodine from, from the foods that we cook here in our country?
Director Karza?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there are other sources of iodine, but sometimes the iodine that we get from our food intake is not enough. That's why iodization is important to ensure that we meet the adequate levels of iodine necessary to maintain our functions on metabolism as general population. And of course, for pregnant women, the brain development of their, the child. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Would you agree that iodine can come from eating milk, eggs and seafoods? Would you agree to that?
Anyone from DOH or National Nutrition?
Yes, Mr. Chair, those are some of the food products that contain iodine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are you also trying to tell this, the members of this body that the Filipinos lack eating eggs, drinking milk and seafood? Are you trying to tell us that? That the... Para bang ang sinasabi niyo po kasi sa amedito is iodized salt is the only source of iodine? And that if we do not put as ingredient iodized salt in our food, will result to iodine deficiency disorders? Is that what you're trying to tell us?
Yes, Director Apape?
Yes. There are actually other sources of, as mentioned, but we are saying that hindi po enough yon.
It is not enough, you say? So, if we eat plenty of eggs, plenty of, drink plenty of milk, and eat plenty of seafoods, that would not be enough to replace iodized salt? Is that what you're trying to tell us? Kasi masyado pong rigid 'yung stand ninyo eh.
Maybe, sir, you will be, you will get enough, but you will also have excess in the...
Again, Mr. Chair, sabi mo, we'll get excess. Dung pa sa pagkonsumo ng iodized salt, so often, would it not also result to excess? Kasi sinusundan ko lang po 'yung logic ninyo eh.
Director Pape? In other words, will there be a deleterious effect if you, if there is an excess iodine intake?
Yes, everything in excess is, will result to excess. And, but according to our experts, so far iodine toxicity is very far from happening, and there is no case of iodine toxicity so far in the Philippines. That's what we get from our experts.
Honorable Akop, Chairman Akop?
Yes, thank you. Republic Act 8172 was enacted in nineteen ninety-five. Tama po? Yes, and what was the iodine or iodine deficiency then for the Filipinos during that time before the enactment of the law?
Director Pape?
Yes, Mr. Chair. In nineteen ninety-five, we have a data from the FNRI. No, I'm not sure if FNRI existed that time, but we have a data that says...
Yes, it existed. FNRI existed, was already existing in nineteen ninety-five.
Two years, nineteen ninety-eight. The data, let me just see, it is seventy-one percent for schoolchildren. That is, it's measured in terms of urinary iodine concentration, micrograms per liter, where they, they measure the urine, and it is seventy-one. The standard is supposed to be adequate, is said to be a hundred. But it's seventy-one, hundred to two hundred is supposed to be what is okay. That was the data, sir, in nineteen ninety-eight.
Nineteen ninety-eight?
Yes, sir.
That was after the implementation of the...
Implementation of the law.
Three years after the implementation of the eight-one-seven-two?
Yes, Paul.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Chairman Akop.
I was asking for the data regarding iodine deficiency for Filipinos before the enactment of the law. And the next question I would ask would be, what is the data after the enactment of the law or twenty or twenty-five years later after the enactment of the law? Because we would like to find out kung may improvement talaga, malaki 'yung improvement o mahina. Di po ba? Kasi after twenty-five years, dapat nga, 'yung iodine deficient disorders would have been limited already. Yun po 'yung aking idea, Mr. Chair. So, ano po 'yung data before the enactment of the law? And after, or twenty-five years thereafter, the enactment of the law?
Director Pape?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We don't have a data before enactment of the law. The earliest data that we have so far is nineteen ninety-eight, which is just three years after the law was enacted, which was seventy-one for children six to twelve years old. Yon 'yung deficiency. Seventy-one micrograms per liter, 'yung ano, 'yung mga six to twelve, six to twelve years old children.
So, twenty, twenty years later?
The latest data, sir, that we have is twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen by the FNRI. It's now one hundred seventy-four, which is at adequate level. That is for six to twelve years old. But I would also like to mention that aside from getting the data for children, they also got data for pregnant, lactating and, and women of, lactating women of reproductive age. Also, yes, lactating and pregnant women. So, it shows in over in the data, the data for lactating and pregnant women started only in two thousand three. And so far, sa ngayon po, ang women and lactating, ang pregnant women and lactating women, sila po 'yung hindi nakakamit sa standards ng ano, kumbaga hindi sila okay, but the children, okay po 'yung data nila. Yun po, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's go to your statement a while ago that eight-one-seventy-two is not the cause, the main cause for the death of the local salt industry. Did I hear you right, Director?
Yes.
Director Pape?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes, okay. My colleague, Congressman Lee, he stated a while ago that eight-one-seventy-two prevented local industry salt producers were, were prohibited or banned from selling their local produce? Saan po nila, saan po nila ibebenta 'yung kanilang produce kung hindi dito sa Pilipinas? Di po ba? A, the law prohibits them from selling their produce? And you say to us that it is not the main cause for the, for the death of the local salt industry?
Director?
I, I...
Yes, please proceed.
I don't, I don't understand why they, ang alam ko lang po is they are supposed to iodize their salt to be able to sell. Because the law says that all producers are supposed to iodize their salts. So, when you sell an iodized salt, ASIN na hindi na iodized, that's part of violation of the law. And I think that is what Honorable Lee have mentioned, that they are prohibited to sell their, their products. I think, yes, they are prohibited if it is not iodized, because that's part of the violation of the law. But, yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, would you agree with me, madam? That we can remove the provision of Republic Act eight-one-seventy-two that prevents local salt producers from selling their products? Would you be amenable to that if we amend that provision?
Yeah, I, I think, sir, that there should be no salt that will be sold and iodized if all, if all salt producers iodize their salt.
A while ago, Mr. Chair, you admitted that, that local salt producers cannot sell their products because of the provision of the law if it is not iodized, right? That's what you stated a while ago?
Yes.
Are you, are you trying to say now that you did not state that?
Yes, sir, it's a violation of the law to sell your products na hindi iodized.
Now, I'm asking you, Mr. Chair, madam, if we amend the law prohibiting local salt producers to sell their products, would you disagree with that if we amend that law? As you have disagreed to the repealing or the amendment of the law?
Tingin ko kasi, sir, it ganun ang nangyari.
That's not the answer, appropriate answer to my question, Madam Director. I would like a direct answer.
Just answer the question, Director Pape?
It will in a way also go against the law to, of mandatory iodization of all salt produced.
I agree if, because there's a law, eight-one-seventy-two. It prevents local salt producers from selling their products which are not iodized. I agree with you completely, kasi Congress namang po ang gumawa nung batas na yon eh. Di po ba? Now, it is only Congress which can amend that law. Now, if we amend that law and allow local producers to sell non-iodized salt to the Filipino peoples, would you disagree with that, Madam Director?
Yeah, I think Congress has the wisdom to, to do all the decisions after hearing all the arguments of resource persons and reviewing all the facts. I think, I believe in the wisdom of Congress, of you lawmakers, representatives to do the right judgment, and we are just trying to provide some information. Thank you.
Madam Director, Mr. Chair, the, you as resource persons are invited here to provide us a broader spectrum insofar as this issue is concerned. So that when we come up with laws to be enacted by Congress, kokonti po sana 'yung diferensya. Yun po ang tayalan kung bakit tayo nandito ngayong umaga. Now, my question is, if we amend that provision preventing salt, local salt producers from selling their produce without the iodine portion, would you agree with it, Madam Director and the DOH? Para magkalinawan po tayo?
Ako po, whatever the law, whatever the Congress and Senate comes about, we are here to abide by as we are trying to, because the Philippine law, the ASIN law is there, and we're trying to implement it and push for it, and that's why I think we're here also to defend it. So, whatever laws that the Philippine government comes about as part of the executive, we will be there to support it.
From the DOH?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The department, based on the current evidence that we have, will support the mandatory iodization. So, removing that prohibition, Madam Mr. Chair, in the ASIN law will essentially remove the mandate for iodization. So, we might not be able to support that legislative proposal, Mr. Chair, because that essentially will repeal mandatory iodization. And if the Congress will lift or remove the mandatory iodization, I think we should be able to prepare the government to respond to the negative consequences on health, such as the ones mentioned by the EDRita a while ago on mental retardation, stillbirths, so increasing maternal mortality rates in the Philippines and various iodine deficiency disorders, Mr. Chair. So, if the wisdom of the Congress is to remove that provision, I think Congress should also be able to consider providing measures that will safeguard the health of the Filipino people, meaning responding to the potential negative health impacts. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Chair? Honorable Akop?
Sir Chair.
Sir Chair? I just wanted to come up with a win-win solution. Because I am not agreeable to preventing
Mr. Chair?
Local salt. Madam, I still have the floor.
Let us, let Honorable Akop finish his interpolation. Honorable Marisa Delmar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I've said, I just wanted to have a win-win solution. And I do not disagree that we prevent our local businessmen producing salt without iodine, not to be able to sell their products. Kasi para bang by law, pinatay na natin 'yung kanilang pagasa eh. And that is what I am against. And that is why, Mr. Chair, I would propose that we, in the amendments to be considered, I propose the amendment of removing that prohibition provided for by Republic Act eight-one-seventy-two. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Akop, Honorable Lee, and then Congress, Honorable Di Venesia, and then Honorable Marisa Delmar.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to add, no? This representation has filed House Bill five-six-seven-six, now, the Philippine Salt Industry Development Bill, which actually, one of the provisions there was to amend the prohibition from, for local salt Maga Asin, no? Selling their non-iodized salt, no? Because what's the point of prohibiting them and then we allow importation of non-iodized salt, no? So, ang nangyayari, gusto nating iodize lahat ang gamitin, even 'yung mga... even 'yung mga big food manufacturers, but we allow them to import non-iodized salt, no? Then, and, uh, to my understanding, very few are actually complying. Uh, so I, I think the DOH here has, uh, alam nila yan, no? So, useless po 'yung, uh, prohibition na yon, no? In Vietnam, from nineteen ninety-eight, I have, uh, the data here, uh, in Vietnam, from nineteen ninety-four until two thousand five, ninety-three percent of household, because they are uh, required also to use ad- iodized salt. But from two thousand five to tw- twenty sixteen, inalis po nila to. Ang ginawa na lang nila is only for processing, food processing, or direct eating, direct eating 'yung dapat po iodized so- salt ang gamitin. But is, again, few food users have followed the guidelines, no? So, 'yung po 'yung nangyari, uh, gusto ko lang idagdag, no, kaya, uh, for the information of, uh, uh, the honorable Kong Akop. Uh, ako mismo, meron akong experience ganun sa family. My mom, who is eighty-four years old, uh, few, uh, about fifteen years ago, nagkaroon siya ng goiter. And, and sabi ng doctor, one of the reason was iodine, uh, deficiency, right? So, I fully support that, uh, we should put in place the full iodization, or 'yung po nga, hindi po natin dapat alisin 'yung paggamit po ng iodized salt sa ating pong mga pagkain. But also, I would like to emphasize that uh, dapat po nating payagan or alisin 'yung pong, uh, prohibition from our local mag-aasin for selling or producing their, uh, non-iodized salt. Kasi po, ang nangyari po dito sa Asin law, we prohibit them. Tapos hinayaan natin sila, the government, pinabayaan po sila, hindi po natin sila binigyan ng support at assistance tungkol po doon sa kung paano po gawing iodized salt, no? Kasi kailangan po nito ng sapat na puhunan din para gawing iodized salt po 'yung kanilang asin. So, yun lang po, Mr. Chair, maraming salamat po.
Thank you, uh, Honorable Lee. Uh, Kong, Honorable De Venesia?
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm happy that, uh, Kong Akop actually asked a lot of our, uh, questions, um, and clarification to the resource persons. But I do have, um, a few follow-ups. Um, okay, so it was made clear already by some resource persons that, um, there is an impact of IDD on pregnant women. Um, and then it was mentioned that there is a drop of ten to fifteen IQ points. Uh, just to clarify, IQ points on the child that will be reared by the pregnant woman after childbirth, uh, kung may IDD siya, tama ba?
I think, uh, impact on the, uh, fetus, uh, while, uh, impact on the wom- uh, on the iodine deficiency of the mother to the fetus. Uh, am I correct, uh, Director Papi?
Yes, your honor.
Yes, uh, on the fetus, or the would-be child.
Okay. All right. And then, ano po 'yung, um, impact ng IDD naman dun sa ibang mga, uh, areas of the population natin, like, for example, sa infants or dun sa iba pang mga age groups? Because I mean, we're one hundred ten million Filipinos and this law impacts everyone because, uh, it requires that all the salt that we intake into our bodies should be iodized.
I think it was already, uh, elaborated earlier that it affects the brain development of everyone, especially during the growing up years. So, from the time of conception to, to, let's say, up to twenty-one, uh, years old, where the, 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 the brain development or the nervous system development, uh, is, uh, mostly developed during that age, uh, years.
Fair, Mr. Chair.
As far as the, uh, on the effect on the brain, uh, that was, uh, explained earlier, uh, Honorable, uh, De Venesia.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. But what about after twenty-one? Like, what, what about after, like, the brain has fully developed? Um, because there was mentioned kanina of a personal experience of our colleague about, uh, his mom getting goiter. So, I mean, what are the other, um, negative impacts of IDD on other areas of the population?
There are other diseases that are, uh, uh, I, that are iodine deficiency related and that let us ask from the Department of Health or from the National Nutrition Council?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chair, um, iodine deficiency among other, uh, population groups, uh, uh, can lead to other thyroid-related, um, issues, no? Uh, so, I think one of the most common, um, since, um, iodine is needed to ensure proper, um, production of thyroid hormones important in our metabolism. Uh, goiter or, uh, hypothyroidism is the, one of the most common, um, impacts, health impacts due um, to the other, uh, population groups, no? So I think in the, um, correct me if I'm wrong na lang, uh, Director Pep, uh, Papay, um, in the early stages of the development of Asin law, historically, parang goiter was one of the trigger because it was prevalent, um, before, especially in landlocked areas. That's why, um, iodization was, uh, was the strategy also, um, that, uh, led to the Asin law. So, uh, those are just some examples of, um, the negative impacts, uh, to other population groups. But it's important to all of us to maintain normal metabolic functions, Mr. Chair.
Honorable Venesia?
Did I get it correct that, um, salt is, uh, iodized salt is not the only source of iodine for our target, uh, population, but you can also get it from eggs, milk, seafood, et cetera. But it's just that salt, iodized salt is the most cost-efficient and effective way to, um, seed, you know, iodine to the target population. So I'm just wondering, Mr. Chair, parang, um, um, I mean, how much iodine is needed in the body that these other, uh, food groups like egg, milk, and seafood can provide?
Uh, Director Papi?
Yeah, as, uh, noted, uh, there are really other food sources for iodine, but, uh, hindi po lahat, uh, not all, uh, can have this adequately. And, uh, so there is a way of getting the cheapest way of providing iodine to the general population, hence the salt iodization. So, uh, like, especially the landlocked areas, uh, usually the main source is seafoods, uh, and like in the Cordillera and in other areas, uh, they don't have the sources, uh, readily available and sufficient enough to provide the adequate, uh, iodine, uh, requirements of the body. Mr. Chair.
Okay, and so that's why we have this, uh, sort of policy that was enacted in nineteen ninety-five na parang the most cost-efficient way to seed iodine to our general public, uh, was passed, of course, which had, um, you know, negative impacts, uh, on our, uh, cultural heritage, our salt industry, among many other equally important outcomes, um, that maybe are not as mainstream, um, as, you know, health outcomes, which we do also value and put a premium to. So, um, I'm just wondering, how do other countries do it? Like, um, there, you, there was mentioned earlier by a resource person that, you know, when they relaxed the policy on, uh, iodization in Vietnam, it, uh, led to a decline in health outcomes for the country. Um, but I'm wondering if such policy exists in other countries that they require, um, their salt to be iodized? And if not, which is what we are actually proposing here, whether it's a repeal in our version or an amendment in Kong Richard, uh, Gomez's version, parang, uh, how do other countries do it? How do they make iodine available to the general public? Um, by, you know, not necessarily requiring that salt be iodized?
Uh, Director Karza?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, globally, there are, uh, based on WHO, there are one hundred twenty-five countries that mandate salt iodization. Uh, a lot of them, majority, uh, require, uh, mandatory salt iodization. So mostly in, uh, Asian countries. Um, and for countries, uh, there are also, uh, other countries, uh, compared to thirteen countries, uh, which have, uh, voluntary salt iodization. But, um, uh, based on systematic reviews, uh, the global improvements in iodine status over the past twenty-five years are really resulted in, uh, major health and economic benefits, especially in, um, low and middle incomes, uh, countries. So, um, it was suggested that efforts should now focus on sustaining, uh, the achievements and expanding, um, the universal salt iodization, uh, Mr. Chair. So, but in, in global practice, around one hundred twenty-five require, um, mandatory salt iodization.
Thank you, uh, Honorable, uh, De Venesia.
So, Mr. Chair, maybe this question is, uh, more for DTI, no? Um, in terms of like the market for salt, uh, for iodized salt vis a vis, um, non-iodized salt, which if I understand it correctly, may come by way of importation. Tama ba? So, uh, based on whatever market studies have been conducted in the past, I mean, what is the demand for iodized salt vis a vis non-iodized salt, which can only really be imported because of our restrictive, um, um, policy landscape on salt production?
You addressing your question to DTI, uh, Honorable?
DTI, Mr. Chair, kasi I remember in our hearings, uh, for the gastronomy, um, sector, again, part of the creative industry, and we were speaking to a lot of the restaurateurs, um, those that have, uh, MSME, um, um, enterprises, of course, in, in food, and most of them were basically saying, uh, uh, they're not using iodized salt for their business. Parang it's not, uh, ma- maybe it's not their rigor, or maybe it doesn't, uh, contribute to like, uh, you know, the overall, uh, uh, experi- culinary experience that, uh, you know, customers look for when they dine in these establishments. Um, some have even said that iodized salt is so passe in terms of like the gastronomical, um, components of cooking, uh, food or selling them in restaurants and establishments. So I'm just wondering, what is the market proclivity of, uh, iodized salt vis a vis non-iodized salt that can only come by way of importation? Because if you do not iodize local salt, then it's technically against the law.
Uh, DTI? DTI representative, uh? Yes, uh, Mr. Ilano?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Um, on the question of, uh, Kong Tof, um, we'd like to inform that, uh, most of, uh, our exporters, they are really using, um, imported non-iodized salt in, in terms of their, in terms of their manufacturing. And, um, one major issue that they are quoting here is that when you use iodized salt, it does have um, that bitter after-effect taste to some of the manufactured items. Plus, um, they are also aware of the existing law. That's why, um, they are quote-unquote, um, using imported salt because if they use salt that are produced within the Philippines and they are not iodized, it is a direct violation of, uh, of the said law.
Yeah, um, because, you know, uh, I was made to understand in these exhaustive hearings that we had in the gastronomy sector that, you know, globally chefs prefer natural sea salt.
Yes.
And so, us being archipelagic and we, you know, it's really an irony that we are importing our salt. We are of the, uh, capability to actually produce, uh, sea salt that can be also uh, exported to other countries. Kumbaga, we could possibly even have a, uh, an economic, uh, comparative advantage, um, in the production of sea salt. However, this law, and of course, we respect the health outcomes that, uh, the law was responding to, uh, back then in nineteen ninety-five. Um, it calls to mind the question of, uh, really what, uh, like, is the problem, uh, IDD or is it general maln- malnutrition? Um, and now, a days is also a problem of like food security because obviously our agricultural sector has not kept up um, with, you know, shifting trends and demands, um, in the consumer. Um, and of course, as exacerbated by the pandemic. Um, and obviously, this law has worked deleteriously, um, against the small producers. So, actually, uh, now that I'm hearing the position of our colleagues, some of our resource persons, as well as having heard, uh, the well-crafted, um, sponsorship speech of Kong Richard Gomez with all the data points that he shared, um, this representation is actually open to, uh, pursuing this through an amendment, um, as opposed to a general repeal because, at the end of the day, it seems that iodized salt is the most cost-efficient way of seeding iodine to the public. Um, because of a general, uh, a vulnerable population of those below twenty-one years old and also pregnant women. But that's, but one hundred ten million is not, one hundred ten million Filipinos is not all below twenty-one and pregnant women. Um, there are other, um, there are other, uh, health target, you know, uh, populations that also derived their iodine from other sources, not necessarily, um, iodized salt. So I just wanted to put that on record, Mr. Chair, that one we, one we are open to, um, pursuing an amendment as opposed to a general repeal because we do recognize um, the need, uh, for cost-efficient ways of seeding iodine to the target population. But I understand, and I remember this from my elementary school years, um, and, uh, a colleague of mine in showbiz then, I remember LA Lopez, was tapped to sing the jingle that was part of the uh, information education campaign of the Asin law. Um, and if you'll remember the song, iodized salt, iodized salt, tag, iodized salt tayo oha. So, I think perhaps maybe it was effective to, uh, to an extent because we all sort of understood the importance of iodized salt. It, it, it became an LSS, uh, last song syndrome in most people, and maybe we made iodized salt cool back then. Um, but any kind of reform in the, the regulation, the policy landscape for salt here in the country that we are dead set in pursuing will require an information education campaign as well. Um, if salt production done locally is not all going to be fully iodized anymore, um, if this law is enacted, but then it doesn't prevent iodization, then it's really more of, it's a challenge of communication and letting people know that, um, you know, preferably you would eat or you would use iodized salt. Uh, because it addresses, you know, iodine deficiency, which leads to goiter and all of these things, similar to ano, um, with smoking and, you know, graphic health warnings. It's like, obviously, it's bad for you, but it's still available. You know what I mean? I, I'm not, of course, as, associating things, salt iod- is, iod- iodization with smoking. All I'm saying is, um, I agree with the proposal, uh, of Kong Richard to make um, non-iodized salt available in the market, especially if, um, economically, um, it's able to address uh, the ailing salt industry. If we can possibly even unlock, uh, an export potential for, um, sea salt um, that, uh, apparently, we definitely would have a strategic comparative advantage towards producing uh, vis a vis other countries that are not archipelagic in nature. This is also possibly a form of, uh, alternative livelihood that we can, um, pursue in partnership with our fisher folk and aquaculture sector. Um, because they are even more vulnerable than the agricultural sector. And there are so many other um, possibilities that we can, uh, unlock and explore, uh, by, uh, a, a policy, uh, a reconsideration of this policy. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to ask, um, these questions and make a.
Thank you, Honorable De Venesia. Uh, we now have, uh, Honorable Ron Salo and then Honorable Marisa Delmar. Honorable Ron Salo? Or maybe we can have, uh, Honorable Marisa Delmar first and then Honorable Ron Salo? Or maybe we can have uh Honorable Marisa Del Mar first and then Honorable Ron Salo? Honorable Marisa Del Mar, Magzino, you honor recognize? Honorable Magzino? If? Or Honorable Ron Salo? While waiting for them, we'd like to acknowledge the uh presence of uh Honorable Marlene Premiesias Agabao Agabas uh and online Honorable Baby Alan Vargas Alon Alfonso and Honorable Felimon Espares. Uh Honorable Magzino or Honorable Salo, are you still on board?
DTI representative is raising his answer.
Um if they are not around, we will now recognize uh DTI representative Mister Ilano.
Um thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, uh let's uh have uh Honorable Marisa Del Mar Magzino first and then uh Mister Ilano.
Yes, thank you Mister Chair. Uh I'm for the full amendment of the bill, I'm supporting it. My question is, what happened to the assistance programs that should have been extended to our local salt producers to boost their production of iodized salt vis a vis other salt types to increase their incomes? Mister Chair, thank you.
Uh DTI, uh Mister Ilano?
Uh Mister Chair, I'd like to to note that um from from uh from the end of uh DTI, we're on the marketing side, so from the Export Marketing Bureau. And uh we'd just like to share the the comments raised to us by some of our exporters regarding the use of um iodized salt that um some markets are actually requiring-
Is this is this an answer to Honorable Magzino's question, uh Mister Ilano?
Apologies, this is not an answer to the inquiry, uh Mister Chair. But this is another point that uh I think is also important to be raised for uh for the concern of our exporters.
Would you dare, uh would you uh like to answer the question of uh Honorable Magzino first? And then your manifestation?
Um Mister Chair, on the on the question of Honorable uh Magzino, uh that is on the de- dedicated to our regional offices. And I think um if RD Grace is still here, she would be able to give us a better snapshot of the services that were offered to to our salt producers.
So permission to-
Honorable Magzino?
Uh. Thank you, uh Mister Chair. Yes, I would like the uh question to be answered, Mister Chair, thank you.
So uh Mister Chair, may I be allowed to respond?
Uh yes, please identify yourself.
I am uh Regional Director Grace Buluyan, DTI Region-
Uh Director Buluyan.
Regional Operations Group of DTI. In response to uh the inquiry relative to what has happened to the interventions of government, I have presented a while back, ma'am, the interventions of DTI, uh particularly five regions. Um and uh to date, we still assist the salt makers, although we recognize the limitations that is given to them by the ASEAN law or uh Republic Act eight one seven. So they're just limited to producing iodized salt, sir. Tama, as per uh the requirement of them. Also, we participate in the uh monitoring being done by our ASEAN task group in the regions on the compliance of salt makers to the ASEAN. Thank you, ma'am.
Uh Honorable Magzino?
Thank you, Mister Chair. I think that's the best that we can have. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Magzino. Uh do we have uh Honorable Salo?
Yes, Mister Chair. Paray salamat po, Mister Chair. Uh marami na sa mga questions ko, so they've been asked, but it's just an elucidation also. Mister Chair, sa mga resource persons po natin, nabanggit po nila, of course, the hindi lahat po kailangan manggaling po ay dersan sa uh salt dahil may other sources po tayo ng iodine. At 'yung binabanggitin po nila kanina, uh there are other types or sources na pwedeng panggalingan po ng iodine natin, Mister Chair. Ang tanong ko po, ang sinong nagahandle po, in charge po particularly, informing the public of sources of iodine in our bodies?
Uh DOH? Uh Doc uh Director Karza?
Sorry? Uh pursuant to Republic Act eighty-one seventy-two, um here is uh it's tasked to spearhead the public- on the mandanas there's here please. Cooperation for-
See the ball, 'yung promotions board?
Um the the promotion advisory board is NNC po, uh but the spearheading the public information drive is DOH. But the LGU naman po has the mandate uh to uh provide mechanism to ensure iodized salt through ordinance in public information campaign.
Clarification lang, Mister Chair. So lumalabas po, 'yung information campaign ninyo plus the same time, 'yung program that you're undertaking, it's solely to make sure that the people are using iodine. Tama po ba? Particularly iodized salt?
Yes, Mister Chair, particular to ASEAN law po.
Particular to ASEAN law. Pero wala po kayong any other program or any information campaign where our people can get other sources of iodine?
Mister Chair-
Siya po nakakalam na may other sources of iodine po tayo. Maliban po sa inyo sa Department of Health, Mister Chair.
Mister Chair, the Department of Health implements a um comprehensive integrated um communication campaign. Um so nutrition is one of the major pillar of the Health is Life Campaign of the Department of Health in partnership with uh other national uh national government agencies and the private sector. So um nutrition messaging, not just um on iodine ASEAN law, but all other aspects of it. Um nutrition such as uh promotion of balance, variety and moderation that intake your healthy diet Filipino-
Uh honestly, Mister Chair, ang po- ang concern ko po, yes, uh meron po tayong other sources of iodine. Pero it appears that the program that the Department of Health as well as the other agencies of the government solely focused dun sa uh pagkuha po natin ng iodine through the iodized salt. Number two, may binabanggit po kayo kanina that there are vulnera- vulnerable sectors of society who are at mo- mostly at risk of iodine deficiency. Tama po ba yon? Mister Chair?
Yes, uh uh DOH, uh Director Karza?
Yes, Mister Chair, there are um specific population groups that are more vulnerable compared to the general population.
What specifically are these?
Particularly the women of reproductive age, pregnant and lactating, po, no?
Okay, women, the lactating. And what programs have you undertaken to make sure that they have iodine in their bodies as well?
I think-
Other than other than mandating that everyone use that everyone should use iodized salt?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um I think part of the efforts of the Department of Health is to address the overall maternal health and adolescent health of the population. There are other initiatives to ensure that the uh pregnant women are able to meet their health needs pursuant to the omnibus health guidelines of the department. So um it's just not the iodization uh program that uh responds to the need of the pregnant women, so um I-
Now specifically for the you for the for your need for iodine, Mister Chair, anong program ang ginagawa po ninyo, specific interventions for this uh vulnerable sector?
Yes, Mister Chair, um I believe for the department is also um providing uh micronutrient supplementation um such as those including um uh vitamin A, polyc acid and uh other nutrients what necessary for um the specific population. And I think uh there are also efforts in uh um implementing other uh interventions such as mother classes, um et cetera, but in terms of-
Mister Chair, do these supplements include uh provision of possible iodine uh interventions? Iodine supplements?
Mister Chair, the commodities that are disease prevention, unfortunately, they're not presented here today. The Disease Prevention and Control Bureau uh includes uh micronutrient powder and that includes um certain amount of iodine in the formulation, Mister Chair.
So ibig sabihin po, Mister Chair, uh 'yung vulnerable sector, the population that we're talking about already given iodine supplements through the supplements that you're uh talking about uh from based on the statement by the resource person. Ibig sabihin, if they're already, the vulnerable sector already given iodine supplements, is there a need now to iodize the entire requirements or the in the iodized salt being used by entire population?
Mister Chair, if I may-
Yes, uh please uh continue on.
Yes, Mister Chair, so the efforts are not um really exclusive, so they all contribute to the promotion of the health of the vulnerable populations. And yes, there is still a need to uh for the mandatory salt iodization because iodine is still necessary um nutrient to be um to be uh to have- it's still mandatory, uh it's still needed, um Mister Chair, by the general population uh for their um uh multiple uh metabolic functions, no? So even if um they're not-
Yes, Mister Chair, I completely agree with what it's saying. But he also mentioned also that uh there should be a public information. But the question is, are they doing any public information? Mukhang DOH lang po at 'yung resource person po natin, Mister Chair, nakakalam lang that there are other sources of iodine na hindi lang po, hindi lang po natin makukuha po ito from iodized salt. But the question is, what interventions are we doing? Just even in public information, hindi po alam ng general public. So nangyayari, we're dependent on uh this particular source for your iodine, for your iodine needs. Second question, Mister Chair, when you implement, when we implemented this uh uh mandatory salt iodization in nineteen ninety-five, kasi ang binabanggit po ninyo, there's a decrease of uh fifteen percent IQ. Ang tanong, what is the IQ level of the general public at the time in nineteen ninety-five? And what is the IQ now of the general public?
Uh anyone can, anyone from DOH or Nutritional Council can answer?
Uh we don't have, I don't have that data on IQ uh, sorry, sir.
Uh the DOH and the National Nutrition Ca- Council do not have uh the data, Honorable Salo.
Thank you, Mister Chair. This is my concern, Mister Chair, because our policies are not exactly that informed. Uh on general statements, yes, my mental retardation, but we cannot exactly say. Sasabihin na mga resource persons satin, may fifteen percent retardation. Exactly is the data showing? Kasi kung, if this is a good intervention in the first place against mental retardation of our children, honestly, Mister Chair, they're going to look at the data. Mas mababa po 'yung IQ ng mga Filipinos po ngayon compared in nineteen ninety-five. So the question is, is this uh intervention uh the appropriate means to pursue? Just to make sure that everyone is given iodine in their bodies to combat iodine deficiency and to avert possible mental retardation? But that's a general statement, Mister Chair. What exactly is the data showing us? What is telling us? And what is the most effective way? Of course, we would say the most effective is to, and most efficient and most economical is to put iodine in the salt and transfer the burden to the manufacturers. But the question is, di ba, are there other interventions that we can actually pursue? Because we're talking about here the vulnerable sectors. Kasi hindi naman lahat, Mister Chair, are in need of iodine in your bodies, quote-unquote, that can be taken only from iod- from iodized salt. Because according to them, there are other sources of iodine. And not the gen- not the whole population is in need of iodine interventions through iodized salt. So ano 'yung mga other sources na yon? Paano 'yung mga hindi na mga ngailangan ng iodine in your bodies through uh iodized salt? So wala po tayong access, Mister Chair, we're not given any choice. We're not giving any option. Kung dapat bang gamitin ko doon sa pakain ko, because we're informed, we have other, we have access to other sources of iodine in our bodies, not only from iodized salt, but we are not given any option. Kasi 'yung solution is a solution that uh it seems to be a one-size-fits-all. Simply because we say ito 'yung kailangan ng uh mga population, ibigay natin sa lahat. When in fact, what we're talking about here is a certain vulnerable there's there are certain vulnerable sectors in society who need it most. But the question is, are the interventions specifically tailored for them? Or the interventions being adopted is tailored not to anyone, but to general population as well? So thank you, Mister Chair. So any comment from the resource persons, Mister Chair?
Uh the Director Papi?
Yeah, uh Mister Chair, I would like specifically to uh tackle something on the about the information on the food sources, about other sources and utilization of other sources for iodine. Actually, uh uh aside from what Doctor Karza had mentioned on how we inform the public, we have a, we have a program on promoting good nutrition where we inform the public of the of healthy diet. And this includes the promotion of Pinggampinoy, ten kumain ment. We have ten nutritional guidelines on uh what should be the uh the diet, how should we maintain a good diet for the general population? And this includes information on iodine. And we also have the DEP Ed, including this one in their curriculum as part of information for uh among the schoolchildren. And uh we ha- we also train workers on the ground, health and nutrition workers on the ground, barangay nutrition scholars, who are the who's who we say are ambassadors of good nutrition at the barangay level. They are the ones who directly communicate with the mothers. And uh these health workers uh do mothers' classes and do the information, uh education about what healthy diets are, sources of vitamins and the minerals, uh Mister Chair.
Uh Honorable Salo?
Thank you very much, Mister Chair. Thank you very much for that uh explanation, clarification. But definitely, we would wish to see certain data on the health outcomes of this particular interventions that are being done by the Health Department and other agencies uh attached to the Department of Health. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, uh yes, we we I think we need more data. Uh we will have uh a technical working group uh to be created. And I think in in um related to the questions of uh Honorable Chairman Akop earlier, the data on the uh comparison uh between the pre-implementation of eight-one-seven-two and after the implementation. If we don't have the data before, at least we can have a data. Uh you said you had a data in nineteen ninety-eight? And then maybe twenty-five years later or twenty years after, then we can have, we can compare the data on the incidence of uh iodine deficiency-related diseases. Did uh or answering the question, did uh or is the ASEAN law uh effective in reducing the incidence of uh iodine deficiency-related diseases? And then I think the other question there is um, we need a data or figure, uh how percent of the uh- uh, how percent of the uh Asin law contributed to the demise or to the death of the Asin uh industry? Because as you have mentioned earlier, uh, it's not only the Asin law that has been attributed as the cause or causes of the, the demise of the salt industry. So we need to find out is uh how much of the Asin law affected the uh um Asin uh salt industry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for that. Uh, dagdag lang po, Mr. Chair, perhaps maybe request that the data should also include stratification specifically of sectors. Kasi sino ba exactly yung mga mas in need? Sino ba yung mas affected? Hindi lang po in the general population, kundi more specific also. For example, if they are either able to achieve ninety percent iodine uh sufficiency, sino yung ten percent na naiwan? Rather than specifying simply saying na may ten percent na hulax iodine. At the same time, saang areas po sila? Uh, kung binabanggit po kanina, Mr. Chair, these are primarily in landlocked areas. So, in uh better data, will uh give us better uh opportunity to craft more uh better interventions as well. But it's suited, kung san yung pinapatungulan po natin, rather than adopting a solution which is a one size fits all na pangkalahatan palagi without distinction whether these particular interventions are suitable to that uh specific uh population. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Salo. So, uh, Chairman Akop?
Uh, I think uh most of the issues regarding these two bills have been discussed. And the may move that uh this be referred to uh the uh House authorities, simply because uh these two bills and the three bills connected to this uh filed with the Committee on Agriculture and Food, uh, fitting on the same subject. One, uh, agriculture and food, yung economic aspect, ito po yung health aspect. So, may I move, Mr. Chair, that uh we ask the House authorities that uh the, the uh five bills should be considered by the Joint Committee, Committees of uh Health and Food and Agriculture. So move, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, seconded.
So there's a duly seconded motion that uh the two bills be referred to uh the Committee on uh to the House Leadership and uh for possible joint uh uh refera- joint referral with the Committee on Food and Agriculture. Uh, hearing no objection, the motion is carried. So we now proceed uh with the next agenda. The, the deliberation on bills requiring the disclosure of nutritional information in menus of food service establishments. Um, we have House Bill number two four two one uh by uh Honorable uh Wilbert Lee. House Bill a House Bill number three three five four by Representative Patrick Michael Vargas. House Bill number three six six two by Representative Alfred de los Santos. House Bill number four one six five by Representative Harris Christopher Pong Chuhan. House Bill five five seven one by uh Representative Eduardo Brother Eddie Villanueva. House Bill number six two four six by Representative Rudis Sar Farinas the first. And the House Bill number six five two zero by Representative Joseph Gilbert Violago. Uh, may we now call on um Congressman Yoloheo Rodriguez uh to uh uh to make an omnibus uh sponsorship speech.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, in the interest of time, I move that the, that uh the explanatory notes of all uh House bills requiring the disclosure of uh nutritional facts in the menu of uh food establishment be considered as their sponsorship and that the same be included in the record of today's meeting, Mr. Chair. So move.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we now proceed with uh but before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of the Chairman of the Committee on Higher Education, uh, Honorable Marco. Thank you very much. So we now uh uh listen to the representative from the Department of Health, um, uh Director Karza.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the Department of Health supports the intent of the proposed bills that seek to require food establishment to display in their menus and menu, menu boards the nutritional content of their food items. Um, uh, but the DOH would also, I would like to submit some uh comments or for consideration of the committee. Um, on the issuance of the nutrition disclosure compliance certificate, the DOH proposes, um, be it under the jurisdiction of the Department of Interior and Local Government as food service establishments and under the jurisdiction of LGUs. On the uh nutrition's information that will be included in the menu labels, the DOH would like to recommend to specify the types of nutrients on the nutrition information to be displayed on the menus and menu boards. And of course, would also consider um the evolving science. So include a provision that will allow the DOH to require additional information in addition to the above stated uh nutritional information should sound evidence regarding their addition emerge. And lastly, on the basis of nutritional information, the DOH would like to recommend for consideration of the committee to include provisions on monitoring and evaluation of the compliance of food service establishment to the proposed legislative measure. But overall, Mr. Chair, the DOH is supportive of the uh measure. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, I will temporarily act as the Presiding Officer uh because our chair went to uh with somebody, meeting with somebody. Okay, now let's call the uh the Director of the National Nutrition Council, uh the Director Rita Papi. Director Papi, you are now recognized.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh Yes, the NNC also supports the uh the recommendations of the bills uh that uh requires the disclosure of nut- nutritional information on the menus of food establishments uh to provide consumers basis for decisions on the food choices towards achieving a healthier diet. This is especially so because we have a big problem on overweight and obesity, and that problem is one of malnutrition problem that is increasing. And I think that would be a very uh uh good intervention uh to, to have better choices. Let me also, let me continue.
Yeah, please.
The provision of nutritional labeling on res- on restaurant menu has the potential to impact positively on consumers' health and nutrition by reducing consumption of less healthy food. So, there are limited studies on the impact of for restaurant calorie labeling for particularly on reduced calories uh ordered. Menu calorie labeling is a relatively low-cost education strategy that may lead consumers to purchase food which has less calories based on a systematic uh review uh based on systematic review. So, actually, we are uh fully in support of the, the food labeling as proposed by the uh bills. And uh we are uh also suggesting that in addition to the to the establishments, as mentioned, that has only twenty or fifteen, uh, they can consider also uh big, big establishments uh located in some areas because there, there may be areas, there may be uh uh in some areas, wala yung chain of establishments, but there are big restaurants considered uh to be big enough. They should also be included in the, in the food labeling, uh requirement for food labeling, which will be monitored by the LGUs as the food establishments are under the, the local governments. Thank you.
So the monitoring will be on the responsibility of the LGU?
As mentioned by the Department of Health, the DILG and the local government units uh that takes care, has, has uh jurisdiction over establishments in the, in their local, in their areas.
Thank you, uh Director Papi. Uh, may we now listen uh uh the representative from the Food and Drug Administration, uh Doctor Maria Victoria Pinyon.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Uh, yes, uh FDA supports the proposed House bills and we uh commend the, the authors that uh prepared this because this is in accordance with our existing uh policy. Uh, we issued administrative order on food labeling wherein we, uh, the declaration of uh nutrients, uh specific nutrients are uh mandatory in, and the labels of processed food. Thank you. And uh for the details of the House bill, uh, we will review and submit comments. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Doctor Pinyon, um, from the DTI.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, Attorney Valdez?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, the DTI has yet to have um a consensus or an approved uh position, official position on the matter. However, the um general agreement is that uh we agree on the uh proposal and uh we do have some comments, uh first being that um if the intent is for um to inform, to have a nutritional information uh campaign, we suggest to have also a standard on the uh for specifications on the menu board for those with um visual uh problems so that they could, they will be able to uh see the nutritional facts. Also, uh, we for, also propose to have some information on health risks for those uh consumers um that are um uh have health conditions like uh cancer, asthma, or even um G six PD. Um, nevertheless, uh, Mr. Chair, we uh defer to the DOH and the FDA on their uh expertise on the subject matter.
Thank you, Attorney Valdez. You please uh submit your official written uh position to the uh Secretariat.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Next is uh from the uh DOSTFNRI, uh Doc, Doctor Rosemary Dumag.
Good morning, Chair, Honorable Chair. So, um, we believe that the proposed bill is one of the government strategies to, to address the health challenges and to improve the Filipino dietary intake and nutrition. May you allow me to please read the DOSTFNRI backgrounds, comments, and suggestion on our position?
You are in support?
Um, yes, Chair, um, Honorable Chair. And um I just want to raise uh our suggestions and comments to the bills.
Please submit your uh, your suggestions or your recommendations to the committee.
Um, yes, Honorable Chair.
Thank you, uh, Doctora. Uh, we now um have the members of the committee who wishes to uh interpolate.
Uh, Chairman Akop?
One, only one question, Mr. Chair. Uh How, how would DOH envision the participation of local government units in the implementation of uh uh this law if ever it becomes a law?
Director Karza?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, based on the draft bills that we have able to review, uh, we envision that the DILG will be the one really monitoring the compliance of um the food establishment that will be given the uh NDCC, uh, the National um Disclosure, Nutrition Disclosure Compliance Certificate. That's why we also uh suggested, Mr. Chair, that they should be the one, the ILG be the one to be uh able to issue this certificate instead of um the Department of Health.
That would be similar to uh Republic Act eight one seven two? Under section five, paragraph C and section seven of eight one seven two? You want me to read?
It's okay, Mr. Chair. I think the um the only difference, Mr. Chair, is that the uh they don't have to undergo um FDA uh um certification under the salt iodization. But in terms of the um NDCC, it will be similar to issuing sanitary permits and business permits, Mr. Chair.
Uh, would it be better if we require on this uh uh in one of its provisions that all local government units should come up with an ordinance mandating such? Rather than you state it here under, like under Republic Act eight one seven two? Na yung duties lang ng local government units?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the issuance of a local counterpart uh policies is indeed uh important in ensuring the implementation of the intent of the law.
Para mas malakas yung participation ng local government unit, they should come up with an ordinance mandating such.
Uh, we agree, Mr. Chair, but uh we are also a preview of the local autonomy of the local governments, whether um they adopt or not. But I think in the universal healthcare law, um, local government units are already mandated to issue stricter policies on health and health promotion policies and programs. Um, so we uh support, Mr. Chair, the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chairman Akop. Uh, Chairman Marco?
Uh, I think this is a loadable program, but uh what I'm worried there is how we gonna implement this uh particular measure if it's approving to the law. Uh, for example, the food that we are going to take today, kailangan merong nutritional information, every item, yung rice, yung fish, and everything. So if you have all this implemented among all service establishments, uh, including McDonald's, Jollibee, Starbucks, and so forth and so on, uh, ito ba yung objective natin dito, to mandate all of these institutions? Providing food service? Lahat ba ito? Baka, bakahirap ya itong Director Karza?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and so far as the versions of the bill that we have um reviewed, uh, they are indeed covered by the food establishment with exemptions to um small uh food establishments such as Carindia food stalls, ambulant vendors, and kiosks. But uh menu labeling is really one of the interventions that uh races, uh consumer, uh nutrition literacy, so they're able to um decide on the nutritional intake that they will uh eat. But no, so it's really one of the educational interventions um that may have potential positive impacts, Mr. Chair. But we recognize that uh it might be difficult um for small uh food establishment as uh exempted in the bills. Uh, that's why uh we are also amenable to that provision, Mr. Chair.
Because uh we might be coming out with another law that we cannot really implement. Uh, yun ang ano, so you are saying my small establishments, food establishments, hindi kasama rito? Ano yung ibig sabihin ni small in terms of uh capitalization or what? Ano bang? Ano natin?
In the bill, sir, um, uh, it was uh specified that Carindia's food stall, ambulant vendors- food stall, ambulant vendors, and kiosk are the ones exempted from the uh menu labeling. But we um perhaps uh the definition of um small food establishment can be included as part of the um uh definition of terms of the bills to provide more clarity.
Hmm. Is there, is there a definition, a clear definition of what Carindirya or uh uh small uh food establishment uh is? Meron ba?
In the um in the bills, po uh establishment that may uh uh less than or greater than twenty um stores uh are operating under the same name, you are required uh to have menu labeling. So if there are um not less than twenty stores, tapas uh they're not operating the same name. Um they may be exempted to the uh to the menu labeling requirement. But uh again, Mr. Chair, we also reiterate that um defining this uh is necessary to provide more operational clarity. And perhaps the Department of Health can just submit a proposed definition of them, so um we can consider in the committee.
Yeah, yeah, 'yung twenty uh in a particular locality or nationwide, province-wide, region-wide, or ano, ano ba yun?
Unfortunately, Mr. Chair, I I cannot answer to the uh intent of the uh
The proponents?
But uh I think uh as long as they carry the same name, meaning uh for example, if it's a fast food chain with more than uh twenty um outlets or branches, um they are already covered by the menu labeling requirement. So if the uh establishment doesn't have that or doesn't meet the requirement, they may be um exempted from the menu labeling requirement.
Irregardless of the volume of sales uh per uh
I think, Mr. Chair, in the bills, um the sales was not um part of the consideration. It's just really the number of um stores and uh the naming or the the name of the food establishment registered.
Hmm. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Honorable Marggo. And yeah, yes, uh Chair, Ako?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh uh Director, uh there's an order of the DOH uh mandating the placement of nutritional uh information and caloric intake for certain products, di po ba? Meron po kayo administrative order yata na yun eh?
We do have for prepackaged food products and under the jurisdiction of um the Food and Drug Administration.
Yes, and uh in that administrative order, you exempted uh restaurants from doing so. So, may know the reason of uh of uh DOH, why you exempted restaurants from this administrative order of the DOH?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, uh this Doctor uh Doctor, Doctor Pinyon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh actually, uh the administrative order number twenty fourteen dash zero zero three zero is about on uh guidelines of processed food. So it does not include po 'yung mga food that 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 is beyond the far view of FDA, kasi ang mandate po ng FDA sa processed food, yun pong mga ah nakapak na pagkain na nasa supermarket. So yun pong sa mga uh local government po, 'yung mga catering, mga food establishment, mga fast food. Hindi po yun kasama sa uh far view ng FDA in accordance with Food Safety Act, 'yung RA ten six eleven po. Thank you, Chair.
Honorable Ako? Thank you, uh any other member?
Mr. Chairman Marggo?
Uh considering the fact that there are uh six, seven uh bills on the same subject, I, I would like to propose that uh we consolidate all these bills. Hence, I propose and I move that we create a technical working group to uh review uh the inputs of the Department of Health and the other agencies and probably solicit the input of private uh establishments engaged in the service and delivery of uh food, such as what we are talking about today. And come out with a uh possible substitute bill after uh uh the work has been done by the committee, by the technical working group, Mr. Chair.
So there's a motion by Honorable Marggo, duly seconded, for the consolidation of the six bills? Uh seven bills? Uh and uh the creation of a technical work, work, technical working group that will consolidate, that will study and possibly invite, not possibly, and invite uh other uh agencies and private stakeholders so that uh we can come up with uh uh the best uh uh committee report on these bills. Hearing no objection, the uh motion is approved. Next is uh the deliberation on uh House Bill number six five four seven, an act establishing a fifty-bed capacity district hospital in the municipality of Datupaglas, Magindanaw del Sur, to be known as the Datupaglas District Hospital, and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Mohamed Paglas. Uh Honorable Paglas, you are now recognized for your sponsorship speech.
Bismillah, rohmanir, rahim. Uh representative from Magindanaw del Sur, uh Mohamed Tom Paglas Senior. Uh the uh presiding uh chair, my esteemed colleagues, and our distinguished guests and uh resource person. Good morning, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. The municipality of Datupaglas has experienced relative peace and harmony because former kumbatan's is the ones worst stricken locality where given a chance to be employed, leading to access to education, better shelter, and more economic activities. However, this town has yet to have its own decent and modern hospital facility that will serve its people and provide better health condition. To give the residents of this municipality and other nearby towns and even provinces a chance to be a given adequate health and medical services, this bill proposes the creation of the municipality's own district hospital, the Datupaglas District Hospital. Having reachable and better medical services will improve the overall quality of life of the residents. And in the long term, this will hopefully contribute to bring a lasting peace and order in the province of Magindanaw del Sur and other provinces surrounding it. The basis of this bill is therefore earnestly sought. Thank you and good day. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh.
Thank you very much, Honorable Paglas, um Doctor Melissa Sena from the Department of Health.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The newly established province of Magindanaw del Sur is composed of twenty
Mr. Chairman?
municipalities including Datupaglas with an estimated population ratio of one is to one thousand eight hundred ninety-three, based on the twenty twenty-two estimated population.
We are, we have uh more than one hundred thousand in population in our municipality. We have uh twenty-three barangays. And we are in the uh boundary of uh uh Cotabato del Norte and Sultang Kudarat, Magindanaw.
Thank you, Honorable Paglas. Uh Doctor Sena, please continue.
Thank you, sir. Magindanaw del Sur has three licensed hospitals, two Level One Hospital and one Level Two Hospital, which are owned by the local government unit. So uh both provinces of Magindanaw del Sur, Magindanaw del Norte have a total gap of two thousand nine ninety-six Level One Hospital beds and a gap of six hundred seventy-three Level Two Hospital beds by twenty twenty-five. In view of the foregoing, the DOH interposes no objection to the proposed establishment of Datupaglas District Hospital, which shall be under the supervision and control of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region of Muslim Mindanao Ministry of Health as stated in section one of the bill. We recommend revising section three of the bill to state that the construction and op, that the BARM, M O O, that the B A R M M Ministry of Health shall include the amount necessary in the ministry's budget for the construction and operationalization of the Datupaglas District Hospital to align with section, to align with section one of the said bill. The province may also consider to reevaluate the proposed site for the establishment of the hospital. Based on the mapping of hospitals in the province, the municipality of Datupaglas is within a one-hour access from the Buluan District Hospital. While the population of the municipalities of Datu, Montawal, Pagalungan, and General Escape Pendatun do not have access to any existing hospital within the ideal one-hour frame. Not with, notwithstanding the ownership of the hospital, the DOH will still provide technical assistance and ensure its compliance to standards and also crafting the hospital development plan in accordance with the national macro plan, which is the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan. And also making sure that the hospital development plan is aligned with the local investment plan for health of the province. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, uh Doctor Sena. Uh Honorable Paglas?
Yeah, uh Mr. Chairman. Uh so we seek the help of your office, the Congress, to help us to talk with the uh uh governance of BARM to support, to establish uh one district hospital in our municipality because our municipality is near the uh uh town of Boligawasan Marsh, the uh north, north Cotabato, Blang, uh Talunan. And province of Magidano is JSKP, now Paglat Municipality and Pandan Municipality. In the other province, uh the Sultang Kudarat, Kultup, uh Columbia. Now, our place, we are, people here are try to pour the Luma Muslim and Christian. So we need uh only uh fifty beds of hospital, district hospital in our municipality in Datupaglas. Uh po ay humihingi ng tulong na makipagnayan po sa, magintervent po ang ating Congress to the uh uh governance of BARM na uh tulungan po kami, na magkaroon kami ng district hospital sa municipality ng Datupaglas.
Thank you, Honorable Paglas. Uh Chair Marggo?
Uh hearing no objection from the Department of Health and uh uh other uh positive comments have been raised by uh the sponsor of the bill, I, I move that we approve uh House Bill six five four seven, subject to consultation with the BARM uh Minister of Health. Tama po ba yan?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I, I so moved, Mr. Chair.
So there's a motion to approve House Bill number six five four seven and duly seconded, um hearing no objection. House Bill number six five four seven is uh now approved. Congratulations, Honorable Paglas. Next is House Bill number six nine zero five by uh Honorable Ramon Gico Junior. Um but since uh Honorable Gico is not around, uh we now call on Honorable Chair uh Kong, Honorable uh um Christopher De Venesia, who is sponsor in uh his behalf.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. So uh in behalf of the principal author, Congressman Ramon Gico Junior, uh I would like to sponsor House Bill six nine zero five for the consideration of the committee. Uh this is basically increasing the bed capacity of Region One Medical Center from six hundred beds in the current enabling law uh to one thousand five hundred beds, upgrading the service facilities and professional healthcare therein and appropriating funds. Therefore, uh we have also uh reached out to the office of Congressman Gico uh to be made a co-author of the said measure. Um and we look forward to its immediate passage, uh given that uh the law RA one zero six one four uh expanding the bed capacity of this health facility uh from three hundred to six hundred beds uh that was enacted in twenty thirteen uh by my mother, uh then Congresswoman Manay Gina De Venesia, uh needs to be updated, uh especially given uh changes in the uh population of uh Pangasinan, um that which is serviced by R one MC and the need to be responsive in terms of like the healthcare that's being provided. The, you know, data provided by R one MC actually uh shows that uh there are about that for the three point one four two uh million citizens of the province, uh there are uh, the total hospital bed uh for both private and public hospitals is two thousand five hundred thirty-two. Um but of course, we have uh best practices and ideal uh hospital bed to population ratio as uh promulgated by DOH guidelines and um it's supposed to be at least one is to one thousand two hundred forty-one. Um so this is way beyond the DOH standard bed to population ra- ratio of um eight hundred beds, uh sorry, eight hundred uh population is to one bed. Uh so we have to work on uh attending to the needs of the province, uh definitely by increasing the number of uh uh bed capacity of R one MC. Uh this is to ensure that the, the people will continue to receive globally competitive and accessible healthcare and ease the burdens to the province's healthcare system overall. And ultimately, uh this will redound to the strength uh of the country's overall healthcare system. I, I've made mention of the population of Pangasinan, but R one MC is called Region One Medical Center. Um and yes, it actually does service uh clients from contiguous areas. Um uh not just actually within Region One, but uh those from nearby because it is, it has become a world-class uh health facility uh in the region. Um so we look forward to its immediate passage. And on a related note, we look forward to the DOH uh through the commitment of uh OIC Secretary Verheer uh in the previous uh budget uh deliberations to allocate for um the uh multi-year um construction of hospital uh rooms in R one MC, again in compliance with the law that we are now also seeking to amend, um to provide for even uh better capacity. So thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appeal to our dear colleagues uh for support uh for this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable um De Venesia. Uh Doctor Melissa Sena?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A Region One where uh R one MC uh serves as one of the Apex Hospitals has an estimated gap of two thousand three hundred eighty-five beds by twenty twenty-five. R one MC um is also a designated specialty cancer center for renal, uh specialty center for renal care and transplant, burn care, mental health, geriatric care, cancer care, and dermatology. Uh with uh targeted full implementation by twenty twenty-five. However, we know that it However, we know that it will be moved due to the pandemic. Currently, the hospital is licensed to operate as a three hundred bed Level Three Hospital. Notwithstanding that it was upgraded by law in twenty thirteen from three hundred to six hundred bed Level Three. Uh, its average bed occupancy rate is one hundred sixty-two percent, which is above the ideal of around eighty-five percent. Uh, from uh, the average monthly admission from both emergency and outpatient services is nine, around nineteen thousand. The hospital also serves as apex, uh, not just uh for Pangasinan, but also to serve patients uh to surrounding provinces of Tarlac, Sambales, and La Union. In consideration, we fully support the upgrading of R one MC Region One Medical Center from six hundred to one thousand five hundred beds and also upgrading its services to be able to comply uh, with the establishment of specialty centers as one of the priorities of this administration and to be able to help in closing the gap for Level Three beds in Region One. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Sena.
Um.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Chairman Akop.
Uh, since the bill would involve uh appropriation of funds, do we have a representative from DBM? Uh.
Uh, anyone from DBM? Uh, Mr. Justin, is he around?
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chair.
Yes, okay, uh, so we have uh somebody from DBM, uh, Honorable.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chair, honorable members of the committee.
Insofar as this bill is concerned.
Okay, uh, DB, DBM, Mr. Buisser, uh, please proceed on your uh comment.
Okay, sir. I am Justin Biserfo from Budget Information Legislative Service, sir. I respectfully request po uh Assistant Regional Director Ryan Milanis po to provide their comments and recommendations po on House Bill Number uh six nine zero five, sir. Uh, he's also in the Zoom right now, Mr. Chair. Thank you po.
What's his name again?
Uh, Assistant Regional Director Ryan Milanis, sir, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Milanis, uh, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chair, allow us to share our initial findings or inputs in addition to what um, what were shared um. Kanina po, uh, on funding, Mr. Chair, uh, in accordance with section five of the proposed measure, the R one MC receives an annual subsidy or funding allocation from the national government through the General Appropriations Act. And for FY twenty twenty-three, it has a total appropriation of one point five billion, roughly one point five billion, Mr. Chair, and for twenty twenty-two with a total of one point four six one billion. And as to the budget utilization rates, uh, Mr. Chair, it is, uh, we are glad to note that um the R one MC has an average of ninety-nine percent utilization rate as to allotment and um as to disbursement, Mr. Chair. And on organization and staffing, um, it should be noted that um the increase in bed capacity of R one MC from three hundred to six hundred beds pursuant to Republic Act Number one oh six one four, which authorized the creation of five hundred sixty-four positions and out of which, um, na create na po 'yung one hundred sixty-nine positions. And to date, um, ninety-seven point sixty-three percent of um the created um positions ay na fill up na po um, ni R one MC. But, um, Mr. Chair, um, gusto lang po namang inote that this inputs or uh, information together with the other um details um shall be forwarded to our central office for um the department's official position paper for this measure, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Uh, Honorable Akop.
Mr. Chair, may we ask the DBM representative, do they have any objection insofar as this bill is concerned? Vis a vis the funding requirements?
Uh, Mr. Milanis.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, um, as far as the DBM Regional Office one is concerned, Mr. Chair, um, we interpose no objection to the proposed measure, but of course, I'm subject to the official position paper um of our department, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, uh, this is precisely the reason why the uh, the decision maker of DBM should be represented in every hearing that this House should uh have. Because uh, the, the regional office of the uh DBM insofar as uh funds are concerned cannot speak for in behalf of their head office. And this would delay the deliberation of bills being heard by this committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Akop.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, uh.
I think the concern of Congressman Akop is uh very important. And I would suggest that when this bill will be forwarded to the Committee on Appropriation, uh, you get to read the, the official position of DBM, uh, national, uh, uh, Mr. Chair. If that is possible on the part of the Department of Budget and Management.
Thank you, Chairman Go. Uh, may we hear now from the representative from the Region One uh Medical Center. Uh, Medical Center. Uh, please identify yourself.
Good afternoon to everyone. I'm Dr. Josie Digosman and I'm representing Dr. Joseph Rolland, the head of Medical Center, Chief of Region One Medical.
Please proceed.
Yes, yes, sir. Uh, we'd just like to thank the DOH for supporting this uh, this deal of sponsored by uh Congressman Gico and Congressman Tof De Venesia. And we're hoping that the DB, DBM will immediately release their stand as to the approval of this bill. Because we're really in need of the upgrade, we're really in need of upgrading this, our hospital beds because we really need to cater this number of patients that we are catering at the moment. That's all, sir.
Thank you, uh, Doktora. Uh, yes, Honorable Marggo.
Yeah, if there are no more comments from our resource persons, you know, I have a vested interest in this particular bill because in our city, we have the Baguio General Hospital and only forty-three percent of our patients are coming from Baguio City. And most of the other fifty-seven come from Pangasinan. So with establishment of the hospital from six hundred to one thousand five hundred, that might even decongest a little bit our hospital in the city of Baguio. Having said that, I, I would like to move for the approval of House Bill uh six nine oh five, an act increasing the bed capacity of the Region One Medical Center from six hundred to one thousand five hundred uh beds, upgrading the service facilities and professional healthcare therein and appropriating funds therefore. I, I shall move, Mr. Chair.
So there's a motion by Chairman Marggo and Julie Seconded uh, for the approval of House Bill Number six nine zero five authored by Representative Ramon Gico Junior. Hearing no objection, the House Bill Number six nine zero five is approved.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So before the, um, we move for the adjournment, we'd like to thank everyone.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I would like to move that all members present, both physically and online be uh uh, be considered the co-authors of uh House Bill six nine oh five and also six uh six five four seven, Mr. Chair.
So there's, there's a Julie Seconded motion that uh all members who are present in today's meeting, uh, physically and by Zoom, uh, wishes to be co-author, uh, be included uh in the, as co-authors in House Bill Number six nine zero five and House Bill Number six five four seven. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. So before we adjourn, we'd like to thank everyone, our resource person and members of the committee, um. Uh, two, ang dalawang masisipag, my chairman, Chairman Marggo, and of course Chairman um Romeo Akop and my good friend, Chair, Congressman, Congressman Ilahodyo Rodriguez. And all those present on Zoom, uh, thank you very much, maraming salamat. So may we now hear the favorite motion?
Sure, Chair.
Yes, Chairman Akop.
Uh, may I move that the uh, the hearing of the Committee on Health be adjourned?
Uh, there's a motion to adjourn, uh, Julie Seconded, hearing no objection, uh. The Committee on Health meeting is now adjourned. Maraming maraming salamat.